And the 501(c)(3) foundation is operating without a treasurer at the moment. So I think you owe it some oversight. The Chamber and the Foundation need to spend a bit of work brushing up their corporate governance, and then we need to move forward. But I want to see the parade take place. I think we all do. We've got to figure out how we do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the chambers wishing to speak? Good evening.
Hello, again. Hello, again. One thing that Mr. Burry didn't mention is that the agreement on January of this year had to do with insurance. It wasn't the whole agreement. That's an older agreement, so I think that's a little misleading. The chamber bashing that's been going on, both in social media and here tonight, I think is kind of unacceptable. And I don't know why Mr. Burry's interest is in the Chamber to go into the details on the books. We're talking about a very small amount of money out of a $54 million budget for the city. And I don't quite understand why we have to get into long histories. The Chamber's got their business to run. Yes, they do get some waivers on things, but for what they do for the community, I don't think they deserve the kind of bashing that's going on. Going from 200 members five years ago, when Jesse started, 200 to 500 tells you how successful, popular this group is. And some of the folks who have been speaking, especially earlier tonight, it's sour grapes. I think they're jealous when they were involved in the Chamber. The Chamber was a failing, hated entity in this community. Now it's a popular community. The membership is growing. The community supports Jesse and Michelle. You can tell that by the number of volunteers who show up to help run the Fiesta and some in the local 90254. So I would hope that I favor the subsidy and hope that we have a great St. Patrick's Day Parade.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here this evening? Okay, Madam City Clerk, do we have anyone online?
We have Matt McCool. Matt McCool, your three minutes will begin once you begin speaking.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Hello, Mayor Francois, City Council staff, Matt McCool. Want to go in preface to my comments that it was just not too long ago where the Chamber came and they wanted to cancel the New Year's Eve celebration because they couldn't afford it either. Now, to put this in some sort of historical context, because we did talk about goodwill tonight as far as the agreement. The fiestas that were put on Memorial Day and Labor Day, the Chamber of Commerce gets carte blanche for the city for three days to raise as much money as possible. In return for goodwill, they put on St. Patrick's Day Parade and the New Year's Eve Celebration. Goodwill, both sides benefit, that's good for business. That's what this is about. But let's talk about finances. I think Carolyn Petty hit it on everything, but I'm looking at the agreement right here because we need to see what we saw here tonight about the Chamber finances, which have been a major, major issue. The Chamber shall provide the city with a complete annual report of Fiesta and Fiesta Two, including appropriate financial accounting of profit and loss statements. We do not know the financial performance of the fiestas for the last three years. I've asked for this over and over again. Another point I want to go ahead and add on, because City Attorney Donigan had it right. And I believe that there's a purposeful, convoluted attempt here to make this more complicated than it really is. From the city's standpoint and from the community's standpoint, the Chamber is the Chamber. As City Attorney Donigan said, the Foundation, that is a separate entity to have tax donation dollars in here, but this Chamber of Commerce has money to fund this. This should be a hard, hard no. And I want to go ahead and add one last point on this because this is very personal to me about the Chamber saying that they don't have money. I was sued by the Chamber of Commerce, former Chamber of Commerce President and CEO. She made very serious false allegations about me regarding harassment and needing a restraining order, which was all completely false and absolutely insane, which shows the mental mindset of somebody running the Chamber and probably why the financial problems are where they're at. The Chamber gave her $10,000 for restraining order. I was never served, there was no hearing, there was no nothing. The reason why is because I have never threatened or harassed this woman. She is abusing the situation, but the Chamber has money. It is not the Chamber Foundation that should fund this, it is the Chamber itself. They have money. If they're not making money on the fiestas, that is their own fault. That's my time, that's my piece. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have Laura Penya. Laura Penya, your three minutes will begin once you begin speaking.
Hi, yes, this is Laura Penya. As many of you know, I am an active Chamber member and have been so since Jessica became president. And I have seen firsthand the amount of effort, work, tirelessness of many volunteers. Our board members have contributed to making the St. Patrick's Day Parade, continuing to have it be what it is. But here's the thing, if it cannot operate at a loss, then we need to restructure it because this is a community benefit. And I would agree that most people in our community want it to happen. So if there's any way the city can work out some kind of agreement to assist and then going forward, maybe relooking at the terms, because this is something about our community that bonds us, that brings us together. And we can choose to make this about our differences, and I know we do have differences, but this is for our community. So I would hope that council would consider assisting, providing some kind of arrangement that works, that you feel comfortable with, but then reexamining this part of the contract in the future. Because I do want the St. Patrick's Day Parade. I do support the efforts that have been made so far. So I appreciate your thoughtful consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I do not see any additional hands raised.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience, one more time, that wishes to speak before we close public participation? Okay. Bring it back to the council for deliberations. I'll say from the outset that I'm a little discerning that the ink was, well, the electronic ink was barely dry on the contract, and here we are, talking about this. I thought it could have come up earlier. You know, naturally, we can't cancel the parade and not provide any funds, but, you know, as stated earlier in the questions, the St. Patrick's Parade has traditionally broken even or lost a little bit of money. It was 15,000 last year. Two years ago, it was 3,000. And because they make this money during other subsidized, and we do subsidize that in costs and waivers, and as we do the Fiesta, that they make a good profit on the Fiesta, it's understood that this parade goes on as goodwill. And I suppose we could look at restructuring all of that coming up in the future when we do a new contract. But when we go down the road of contributing and subsidizing more for this, it begs this outlying issue of charging for events on public property and, you know, the implication of what we're doing here. And then recently, the Chamber started charging admission in the Fiesta for the Beer Garden when the outside music occurs. And originally, it was because of COVID control, but it's just continued on down the line. And I don't know, in my personal opinion, I think it's a little inconsistent with the principle of public access and creates a barrier to those that can't pay. So the point I'm going with and the direction I'm going with this is that, yeah, we can come up with money to do this and go forward with it, but, you know, I'd like to include along with that some direction to staff to not agree to future cover charges, or if necessary, bring it back to the council. And that's where I'm going with on this. I'd like to hear from my fellow council members. Or I'll just go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead and authorize up to $15,000 to contribute towards the St. Patrick's Day Parade and in addition to give direction to staff that they not agree to cover charges at future events and, if necessary, bring it back to the council for consideration. And that's the motion I'm going to put out there to begin with. So is there a second to my motion? Okay, no second to my motion. We'd like to go next. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, what the Chamber charges for Fiesta, music, Beer Garden is not relevant to today's discussion. It's interesting, we had a speaker who talked about the sales tax, and that was an opportunity to generate a revenue stream to help the city subsidize cooperative events like this. But we had a couple of council members lead the charge in ensuring that measure failed. And now we have at least the mayor saying, hey, let's take non-budgeted dollars and support the Chamber. I'm going to propose a compromise that we support the Chamber's efforts to host the St. Patrick's Day Parade in exchange for reducing the holiday parking subsidy to the seven days preceding Christmas and ending on Boxing Day. I think this is a sensible and a balanced solution that addresses concerns about tightening the city's spending while still supporting this important community event that nobody wants to see go away. That's where I am, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's an interesting proposal, Councilman Jackson, and a reasonable one, it seems like. I had something else in mind, and I'll throw it out there too, just as food for thought. First of all, I have a lifetime contractor, and in the construction business, a contract is your lifeblood. It's everything. You make an agreement with a customer, a client, to do a project. There's a set price. You agree upon a time schedule. You both sign your name to that, and that contract is, as far as I'm concerned, the law. And to sign a contract and then days, weeks later, come up with, oh, I need some more money, is ridiculous. As a building contractor, I would never want to do business with a contractor who would do something like that. That's, a contract is a contract, and you should stick to it. I tell you, in the beginning times of my career, I was losing money on a job, and I went ahead and finished it and lost money anyway, rather than go, I need more money. That's, I think that's wrong. And this leads me to feel like the Chamber, and by the way, Mr. Elman, it's not bashing the Chamber to talk frankly about what they're doing and how they're handling their finances. When they come to us and ask for money, I think it's important that we have an open conversation about this. And I'm not criticizing the Chamber at all, I'm just saying that when you lose money year after year after year, and you know you're going to lose money again this year, why do you wait until now to come and ask us for money? I think that's kind of wrong, okay? Whether it's, however you look at it. And so my first feeling would be a hard no. We shouldn't have to pay for this. At the same time, I'm conflicted because, like everyone here has expressed the same thoughts, we need to do this parade. We need to do it every year, and we need to do it this year. It is so important to our community. It's one thing that makes Hermosa Hermosa, okay? We are a unique community. We're a tiny, little city. We have our parade, and we have our little beaches, and we own our own beach, and we're a very different community here, different than anywhere, including Manhattan Beach and Redondo Beach. There are different entities than we are. We're special the way we are, and this parade is a representation of that. And I don't want this parade not to happen. So the compromise that Councilman Jackson suggested is something to think about. I wanted to suggest, and perhaps my colleagues might agree, that this is a better way to do it, to lend them the money. Put up the $15,000, and the Chamber has one-year period, no interest, one payment, they can pay off sooner if they want to, and they're able to, but they pay it off by this time next year. I consulted with the city attorney, that's possible to do. It would need to be a regular loan agreement between the city and the Chamber, and I would support that. And if there's enough support for that, I would go along with that. It's a compromise. It gets the Chamber out of the trouble that they're in, but it also gives the Chamber a year to get to work on an answer, on something different than that. I proposed in a private meeting with the city manager a week or so ago that we go together with El Segundo in Manhattan and Redondo and buy these barriers. And as a group, as the Beach Cities Barrier Committee or whatever, and buy these together, store them somewhere, maybe in Redondo or El Segundo, or somewhere where there's room, and then we have a calendar. Our parade doesn't happen on the same day that the Hometown Fair does, or the day that El Segundo has the Chili Cook-Off. All of these cities, including Redondo, has their 10K. They need those barriers to block off their streets, and they're faced with the same problem. So why can't we get together, buy them, store them somewhere, and have a community calendar so everybody gets to use them when they need them? And work out something much the same way we do with the volleyball tournaments. Everybody wants the same days in July, but we get a calendar out and we go, okay, come on, let's work on this. And we make a calendar, and everybody agrees to take the time when they need it. And so this is just one possibility of a way to fix this. But maybe it's time for the Chamber to kind of think out of the box a little bit. Let's, you know, get together and work on this and try and figure out some way so we don't have this same problem over and over again. I think the idea of restructuring our agreements, or the fiestas and the parade and so on and so forth, got to look at that and go, well, that kind of makes sense. Let's get started in a couple of weeks or a month, next meeting or two meetings down the road, whenever there's available time. Let's get started and have a, maybe that should be another new agenda item so that we can get to work on solving the problem so it doesn't reoccur over and over and over again, year after year. It just doesn't make any sense. No business would ever operate that way. No government should ever operate that way, and the Chamber shouldn't operate that way. To lose money every year and then just kind of not do anything about it. So that's my proposal, is that the city, if there's agreement that we could, to lend the money to the Chamber right now to get the parade this year, let's just do that. I see this as two separate problems. We need to have the parade this year, so we need a compromise, we need to work out something. And then we need to work on next year, and the year after that, and the year after that. And it's two problems that we have to fix. So that's my idea.
Thank you very much. So we got a suggestion to lend money, suggestion to reduce parking subsidies, and a suggestion to exclude from charging on public property if we contribute the money. Now, Councilmember Detoy.
Thank you. I think we also need to do some fact correction of why we're here tonight. It's because three of the council members requested this item to come back. I didn't know any unsolicited requests for money from the Chamber for this event. I want to applaud staff for working with the Chamber and the, what's your proper title, Mike? Producer for this event for coming up with a solution to lower some cost for these meridian barriers. One thing I will not do ever is to risk any public safety in our town. I was in New Orleans two or three days after the horrific incident that happened there, and there was a vehicle parked there. And what we cannot do is have these high-profile events in our small town be susceptible to any bad actors out there. And so if this is what is the best, you know, contraption to stop a moving vehicle, you know, innocent or not innocent, we need to use those barriers. The Foundation, so everything is on the website. I think this has been, these events have been, I don't want to speak for anyone involved with the Chamber producing these events, these events do not make money. They're public, you know, sense of community events, goodwill. And under the Foundation website, I have it up right now, the two events that they helped fundraise for or help fund are the St. Patrick's Day Parade and Hermosa for the Holidays, two amazing events in our town. There's 53 people listed as donors that have all pledged either 500 or 1,000 or sometime, somewhere in between for businesses or whatever, which would be $26,500. So the whole Foundation idea was to help fund these events, people can get a tax write-off. My family's donated for the last two years because we find goodwill in these events. I'm not looking for a pat on the back with this, however, you know, I've spent more in this donation to the Foundation than I spend sales tax revenue for the city personally. I'd have to spend $50,000 on taxable goods in the city to give the city that much revenue. But I love this town, and I think, I mean, all of us listening could easily donate and help fill the gap. I don't, I'm not in favor of giving any other subsidies. I think we are very generous with what we have, and with that, those are my thoughts. I think, you know, if the community truly wants this, that's why they have this Foundation set up, is so you can get a tax write-off and we can host these wonderful events. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So you're not in favor of, you're in favor of just keeping it the way it is?
Yes, sir.
And getting the Chamber to put the...
Everyone's able to help fill that void.
Right, okay. Thank you. Councilmember Keegan.
Thank you, Mayor. I think Mr. Jackson's proposal is very interesting, but it probably takes more time to put together because we don't want to just set a day based on, I guess, and seven days is a good idea, but maybe, you know, maybe 15 or maybe 10 is better. You know, maybe we need to look at how much money we make and how much money we spend in enforcement, and it's more of a bigger question to answer maybe at a later date. But it is a good idea. I think Mr. Seaman's idea has some merit in loaning the money, and Mr. Francois's yours doesn't get a second, so I'm not sure it's going too far. So that's the idea of kind of trading public access for support. So I think that the Chamber, we want to have the event, and it seems more urgent, and we have inserted a lot of costs, the city has, in the last two years for barriers. And I just think it's taken a while for the Chamber to figure that out, and they haven't really addressed it. And so maybe that's the big problem in the room, is that the cost structure goes up on one item and doubles and triples their cost in that section of their budget. So I'm interested in Mr. Seaman's proposal. So, Mr. Seaman, if you want to move that forward, I would second that.
If there's no further discussion, then I move that the city make arrangements to lend the Chamber of Commerce $15,000 with a one-year term, no interest, to be paid back in full by, say, January, February 1st of next year.
I'll second that.
And that's my motion.
I'll second that.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yeah, go ahead.
Obviously, you know, this is, you know, once again, you guys are city councils, so we will faithfully execute that. Obviously, don't have the loan agreement typed up ready quite yet, and so if there is a slight modification, basically give staff, myself and Madam City Manager, direction to execute that. The reason for that is, obviously, your statement right then and there is clear as day, one-year term, no interest. But of course, the loan agreement is going to have a few more provisions in that, and we don't want to get bogged down in the details. So if it's okay with you, totally understand the direction, one-year term, no interest, but if you could amend your motion slightly to say, you know, subject to the approval of Madam City Manager and the city attorney, that will make the process go a little bit smoother. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll go along with that, as long as it doesn't get too complicated and it doesn't change the ascent, the essence of what I proposed.
Correct.
And I'd also like to make a comment too, before we vote, if you don't mind.
I'll second that amendment.
Yeah, okay. Now, we'll discuss your motion. Go ahead.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Councilman Detoy made a good point when he said that the Foundation is there to raise money for the community, to pay for these events and for the goodwill of the city, and I totally agree with that. One thing the city, the Chamber can do in the next year, start a GoFundMe program to pay back the loan. Start a Pay for the Parade campaign and take care of that. And then at the same time, we have a year ahead of us to where we can work together, the Chamber and the city together, if we like. I think maybe talking about restructuring our relationship and how the fiestas are done is certainly a good idea. Councilman Keegan mentioned that maybe we should take a look at that. Makes perfect sense. There's no reason why we can't at least talk about it. Not necessarily, we don't have to necessarily change anything, but I think the conversation should be had, that we openly work on figuring out the fiestas and the parade and all of that business, maybe do it a little bit differently. So I think it's a great idea. And, okay, call it to vote.
Well, I've got some comments to make on this motion. I have trouble with it on a few grounds. It's a nice idea, it's unique, hadn't thought about it, but, you know, the Chamber isn't really asking for money to just have upfront to stimulate this and get it moving and expect to pay it back. They wanted specific financial assistance. So it's, I mean, they have their own reserves that they could use. They're not down to nothing on their reserves, so they certainly have 15,000 in their reserves to use, which is what they're going to use to pay the loan back anyway. So I have some trouble with that, and, I mean, I'm just wondering that maybe another compromise to this could be, they've projected an 8,000 shortfall for next year. Let's go with 8,000 instead of 15. It's not that much to create a loan over 15 or 8. Front the $8,000 because they've projected that much of a shortfall this year, and then see what happens. And that's something more preferable for me than to create this loan. Yeah, it's a no-interest loan, that's fine. We don't even know if that's going to help the situation financially with the Chamber. They're asking for specific monetary help in this, not a no-interest loan. So I'm inclined to not support that as the avenue and funding to get to this resolution. Granted, I want the parade as well, I think we all want the parade, it's just a matter of figuring out what's the best way to get there with the parade. So...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may respond to that.
Sure, absolutely.
If, as you say, that the Chamber of Commerce has the money to do this, they don't need the $15,000, that they just want us to give them the money to help pay for the parade, if they have the money, then why are we even having this conversation? Why don't they just pay for it and move on? And then we can just go, get to work on restructuring our agreements and talk about next year and the following year and so on. My thought, my only thought in structuring this as a loan is to save the parade this year, right now. So here we are, weeks away from the parade, contract has been signed, now they need more money. I get that, I understand that. So the idea of lending them the money for a year is to just save the parade this year. And then that gives us time to work on other solutions, new solutions. You know, I mean, I think it's as simple as that. And so, like I said, we have two things to worry about. This year's parade, that's important, that for me is paramount, much the same as Councilman Detoy mentioned. It's dear to all of our hearts, we all want this parade to go on, and that's why I suggested this in the first place. It also gives us breathing room to work on problem number two. How are we going to fix this so we don't do this every year?
No, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the thought and the thinking outside the box, but the Chamber of Commerce didn't ask for a free loan. They indicated that they wanted us to help out with these security and new requirements that come in, and they asked for $15,000. So giving them a loan for 15,000 does not ensure that the parade is going to happen. They asked for 15,000. That's why I suggested an 8,000 figure so they could operate, you know, in the, break even on the parade, which is really what we want to do. We want them to break even on it. And a loan doesn't allow them to break even. A loan, they will pay it back, and they'll be just as much in deficit as they would have been if we never gave them any money. They, to suggest they have... They, to suggest they have no reserves, of course they, you know, they had, I think, $250,000 in reserves just a year or two ago. They obviously have reserves. They're not coming to us because they have absolutely no money and they need this $15,000 or they can't put the parade. They're asking us to contribute towards those expenses that we've imposed on security and police especially. So, you know, that's, that's where I'm coming from on, on that. So, any other?
Yes, one last comment, and then I'd like to call the question. Again, if they have $250,000 at their disposal, I'm not sure why they're asking us for help. I feel, to a certain extent, because of the timing of this, I asked point-blank, I said, Michelle, if we don't lend you the money, or don't give you the money, will the parade go on? And the answer was, I don't know, probably, maybe.
Oh, really? Okay.
Well, that's what she said. Am I incorrect, you didn't say absolutely, the parade are going to happen no matter what?
Hang on, hang on, Mr. Mayor, if you can just ever come up?
If you could come up to the microphone, that'd be great.
You just come in here.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And Michelle, please, don't get me wrong, I don't want to put you on the spot, I'm just, I asked you that question pointedly because I needed to know, everybody wants the parade to happen, and so if, let's say, for instance, the five of us decide, no, no, forget the loan, and, and we don't want to give you any money. If that happens, will there be a parade or not?
We will be, we are moving forward as if there's a parade, yes. We are putting our nose to the grindstone, going for sponsorship dollars, doing everything we can possibly do. But to your point, you are correct. We are asking for a partnership with the city to help alleviate some of the additional security, police measures that have been enacted. And as for the agreement, you're correct, I agree with you too. When you make an agreement or a pact with somebody, it's a, it's a bonding document and it means something. I, again, I wasn't here, but I have seen in looking through the past financials of this, the costs have been extraordinarily high, just increasing every year dramatically. So my best estimate is that when the agreements were signed, the financial picture for these events looked quite different. So that's part of it.
Okay, I appreciate that. But again, just going to be specific, to me, we're working as hard as we can, we'll probably do everything possible, and we hope there will be a parade, is not, yes, there will be a parade. So we're back to the same question, do we want to save the parade this year and then work on the rising cost of security at the parade and other events? I think we should definitely work together on, on the future and try and figure out a way to fix this. Terrorism and people driving into crowds is not going to go away, not in the near future. And so we have to guard ourselves against that. I'm in total solidarity with Councilman Detoy.
We are too.
But this is so important, nobody here, and I, I can't, I will speak for everybody, everybody in this room, nobody here wants to even take the slightest chance of something horrible happening at any of our events. We're totally in agreement with that. And so that's why I'm, I'm suggesting this is a compromise to where this, if you have the money, to be honest with you, if what he said is true, then really, what are we talking about? What we're talking about is maybe restructuring everything for next year. And I don't, I'm okay with that. But in the meantime, I kind of feel like I want to guarantee that the parade's going to happen this year, so I would suggest, let's lend the money to you and then you can pay it back by next year. And in the next following months, we can work together on how do we resolve the problem of rising security costs for our public events. And we're not alone in this, lots of cities are doing the same thing. I'm sure the 10K in Redondo and so on, you know, everybody has the same problem. So there are solutions that can be done and we can work together on it and come up with a solution. But in the meantime, I want to make sure the parade happens this year. That's, that's totally important and make sure it's safe. So, having said that, thank you, Michelle, I really do appreciate it. I know you're working hard to get things together and it's difficult to come into any kind of organization and go, well, whoa, I don't know what happened last year and two years ago, but, you know, I'm trying to fix it right now, and I, that's a difficult position to be in.
I am also fortunate, though, that I have people like Mike Bell around to help me clarify and have the perspective that we need.
I totally agree, good man. All right, thank you so much. So, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to call the question.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to ask Michelle another question while you're up here. We'll, we'll try to deliberate this and try to come to a consensus. So if a loan were given and it has to be repaid back, and you haven't raised any more money, you'd have to deepen, pull into your reserves to pay the loan back. So is it true that an actual monetary contribution of 8,000 gives us a better chance of this parade happening than if we were to loan you the money? Because there's no guarantee that the parade will still happen if we loan you the money because it's got to be repaid, so the balancing, the books are still going to be the same as far as operating at a loss this year.
Right, I wanted to mention, the foundation does not have reserves like what you're talking about.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but the chamber does, the chamber of commerce.
The chamber does, yeah, but the foundation does not.
Right.
A loan is a Band-Aid, essentially. I mean, it certainly would help us moving forward because we're, we're behind in getting sponsorship dollars. We're also noticing that sponsorship dollars are a little more difficult to obtain right now. I think a lot of people are donating to fire-related causes, understandably so, so there's, you know, allocations to different funding for this quarter. So we are behind with that. So certainly that money would help get us going.
Well, I'm glad to hear that because I'm confident and supporting it if I can have some assurance that I think that this is what's needed to, to keep the parade, and if that's the case, then I'm all for it. So, okay, thank you very much.
Sir.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Okay. Madam City Clerk, could we please have a roll call or a online vote here? Where is it? Uh-oh. Can't find it, jeez. Okay, the results are up on the screen. Madam City Clerk, could you announce the results?
Motion carries through, too. No's from Councilmember Detoy and Councilmember Jackson.
Those are the no votes, okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you very much for that. Great deliberation, compromise. What's, what's next on our agenda?
Next, we have public hearing, 16A, approval of new 2025 special events.
How about if we take, take a seven-minute recess? How's that sound for everyone while we're getting ready? Is that okay? All right, why not? Seven.
Okay, here we are reconvening our meeting. Madam City Clerk, could we have a roll call?
If you want, I can, I can go ahead and, and, and do that if that's. Councilmember Keegan? Here. Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember DeToye?
Here.
Mr. Mayor Protem Saman?
Here.
Mr. Mayor?
Here. Okay, resuming our meeting, Madam City Clerk, our next agenda item is the approval of the new 2025 special events. And we open up the public hearing. And it is now open. And Madam City Manager, let's have a staff report. Thank you.
So that would be Madam Director.
Hello again, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. We're going to queue up the presentation here. And we can go to the next slide. At its January 7th, 2025 meeting, the Parks Commission held a public hearing and recommended city council approval of two new special events onto the 2025 special events calendar. Next slide. Both of these events are impact level two. And the first event is the Interscholastic Beach Volleyball League Tournament Series on several dates that are listed within your staff report and on the slide before you, none of which fall within the peak season. Our peak season is from Memorial Day to Labor Day. The event would take place on the volleyball courts north of the pier. It would consist of youth volleyball tournaments and would anticipate up to 150 event participants and 75 spectators each day. The event producer had initially requested Sunday, March 30th, in addition to the dates presented in your staff report and on this slide. But the commission does not recommend approval of the March 30th date to council. And this is because, per the Special Events Policy Guide, the monthly number of event days for events outside of the peak season should not exceed the maximum of 15. We currently already have 16 event days scheduled in March. And the commission would not recommend further exceeding the maximum of 15 days. The only reason that we have exceeded the maximum of 15 to get to 16 event days is because the commission does recommend council approval of one of the Interscholastic Volleyball League Tournament Series dates in March, which is the second. And that is because this is an event for youth volleyball players that serves as a qualifier for the International School Sport Federation's Pan American Cup. So that event has, is a qualifying tournament, which is why we wanted to, the commission wanted to recommend approval of that one, but not the other one on March 30th. Next slide. The second event is the Hermosa Classic, which would be hosted by the Beach Football League, south of the pier, was set up on Friday, May 9th, and the event date being Saturday, May 10th. The event would require the event producer to relocate the south of pier volleyball courts to accommodate our city classes, so those can continue to operate without interruption. The event would include tryouts for the Beach Flag Football, I'm sorry, the Beach Football League, youth football clinics coached by the National Football League, the NFL, players and coaches, autograph signings in youth flag games and adult tackle football games. The event would be free for all attendees and would expect up to 300 event participants and 1,200 spectators each, on the event day. This is just a one-day event. Next slide. On this slide, you can see the site map for the Hermosa Classic. The event producer would be required to work with our Public Works Department to ensure ADA access to the event. And additionally, the city would assign police personnel to the event to oversee public safety matters and with the consideration of the NFL talent onsite. The event producer would also provide security. Certified athletic trainers and college athletic trainers would be onsite throughout the event to respond to any first aid needs and to assist with any injury prevention. Next slide. This does conclude my verbal staff report. We have requested each event producer be in attendance should the council have any questions. And of course, staff is available to assist as well.
Thank you very much. I have a question. The Interscholastic Beach Volleyball League Tournament, did you state they originally wanted March 1 and 2, but instead went with a day in March and a day in April because of the maximum number of days in March used for large events?
They initially wanted two dates in March. It was March 2nd and March 30th. The commission only recommends approval of the March 2nd date because that's a qualifying tournament for youth volleyball players into the, the International School Sports Federation's Pan American Cup.
So March 30 was simply taken off completely, even though they wanted to have it?
Correct. The commission would not recommend approval of March 30 because it would further exceed our limits, putting us at 17 event days versus the 16 the commission is recommending, when the maximum is 15.
I see. So maximum's 15, we're up to 16, this would have brought it to 17. But having it on that date would not have conflicted with anything else?
No.
That could happen, it just didn't fit within the parameters of the restrictions we have. But if we wanted to, we could, we could allow them to add that date back in if we so decided here.
The council could.
Okay.
The event producer shared of the two that the March 2nd date was the most important, and they had an alternate location for backup for the March 30th date.
Got it, okay. Thank you. Any other questions from anyone on my left? Councilmember DeToye?
Thank you. And just to confirm with Madam Director, both these events are good with the times that they have chosen. If, you know, we always want events to come back to us year after year, especially successful events. Both of them are good with those timeframes and aren't going to go into the busy peak season.
Correct. They are both outside of the peak season, and they do not conflict with any of our other returning events.
But in out years, they're, they're content with these dates for now if they do, you know?
Yes.
Enjoy Hermosa Beach, and we enjoy them, and we could have them back year after year.
Yes, they have shared with us that they would like to build consistency within the same month in the future years if they continue to apply and hold their event here.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on my right? Okay. Do, Madam City Clerk, do we have any cards turned in for anyone to speak on the subject?
I did not receive any speaker cards.
Okay, has anyone in the audience wished to speak? Great, is there anyone online?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, no hands online, bring it back to the.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, we have Alexi. Alexi, your three minutes will begin once you begin speaking.
Okay. No response, I guess they've hung up or otherwise.
Hello?
Oh, here we go.
Sorry, it was, it was muted, my, my mistake. My name's Alexi Wall, I am the president of Beach City Sports. We are the largest youth flag football organization here in Southern California, based right here in the South Bay. We've done several events with the city of Hermosa Beach over the years. Two, most recently, in conjunction with the Los Angeles Rams, that we did right there on the beach, football events. And we are very excited about the possibility of this Beach Football League event happening in Hermosa. We think supporting youth sports and youth football specifically for boys and girls in the South Bay is a worthwhile effort. And we think that the Beach Football League plans for this event will not only be great for the kids in our neighborhood, but also great for the city of Hermosa, again, putting the spotlight on the city in terms of the way that these, the beach is used to promote the game of football variety that it'll, that'll bring. So, yeah, I just wanted to express our support for the event. Our kids will, the kids in our league will be involved in the event. So we're looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online?
I do not see any additional hands raised.
Okay, bringing it back to the council for deliberations and a motion. If anyone's interested in making a motion to accept staff recommendation or anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Pursuit disclosure, I did speak to the, one of the applicants for the Beach Football League. Nothing was disclosed that isn't in the staff report. Watched the Parks and Rec Commission meeting. I think they did a great job. I'm happy to make a motion to support Parks and Recreation and Community Resources advisory commission recommendation to include the following impact level two new special events on the 2025 special event calendar. Interscholastic Beach Volleyball League Tournament, March 2nd, April 19th, October 1st, October 12th, November 2nd, November 15th, December 21st, December 30th, and the Hermosa Beach Classic, south of the pier, May 9th and May 10th.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second? Any other questions by my colleagues? Hearing none, Madam City Clerk, could we begin the vote? Okay, the vote is now up on the screen. Madam City Clerk, could you announce the results?
Motion carries 5-0.
Great. Madam City Clerk, what's next on our agenda?
We have Municipal Matters 17A, Discussion of Response to January 2025 Fires and Adoption of an Urgency Ordinance, Temporarily Amending Section 17.42.180 of the Hermosa Beach Municipal Code, Dealing with Regulation and Permitting of Short-Term Rentals and Providing Direction for Eviction Protections.
Okay, who do we have up first?
And, Mr. Mayor, this is going to be my item. I'm wait for my, for my PowerPoint. However, I will, of course, give credit where credit is definitely due. I was assisted by Madam Deputy City, City Manager on this. So of course, if you have any questions or comments, she was very, very much involved. Next slide, please. So by way of brief background, earlier this month, multiple fires, of course, plagued Los Angeles County region, including the Palisades and Eaton Fires. Now, obviously, the recent rains in the area have contributed to reducing future fire risk in the near term. However, you know, like all things in Southern California, definitely not out of the woods quite yet. At its January 14th, 2025 meeting, the city council received an update regarding the fire impact and the city's emergency preparedness and response measures. At this meeting, the city council directed staff to return with a future agenda item pertaining to possible city actions in response to aiding those displaced and impacted by the fires in the surrounding area that are now currently in the city of Hermosa Beach. Next slide, please. So recall at that, at that meeting, we kind of discussed two different buckets of possible actions or possible city responses to the issues and problems caused by the fire. Those done on a staff level by Madam City Manager that are basically common sense, relaxation of a strict enforcement or interpretation of existing city rules. Basically, the city exercising a little bit of discretion in, in its police power. These, some of them, you know, include the code sections here, dealing with parking requirements in the city. We have a specific number of permits we issue for oversized vehicles parked on city streets. Of course, if there was a fire victim that was parked outside of his or her, you know, in-law's house or something like that, something that we could do. And then, of course, compliance with signs and, and parking meters. Next slide, please. Further municipal code provisions that deal with pets and dog licenses could also be considered on a case-by-case basis by Madam City Manager, should the need arise for those now living in the city with their pets by way of fire displacement. Next slide, please. So one of the topics that was discussed at the last meeting was, of course, price gouging after a declared emergency. This is codified in the California Penal Code. And research, you know, in, in the preceding two weeks has indicated the, the office of the Attorney General has numerous resources where this can be reported, both via phone and website. And further, there's been quite a deal of publicity from the AG's office about their commitment to receiving those reports, investigating and prosecuting. As listed on the slide, penalties could be a criminal misdemeanor, up to a year in county jail, a fine of up to 10,000 or both. It's my understanding that they have already filed multiple cases under this exact statute. Typically, as I understand it, for some of the more egregious rental listings, when a couple, you know, before the fires, the house was listed for 5,000, now it's 25 or 30. A key thing to take into account, and this law does authorize the city to adopt a local ordinance with stiffer penalties. Once again, existing law and then the AG's infrastructure and public statements about enforcement being a very high priority here indicate that a local ordinance may not have as much of a dramatic effect absent the state law, that if the AG's office was not really doing much, there could be some more efficacy. But of course, that's up for you all to decide. Next slide, please. The next item that we'll discuss here is short-term vacation rentals. At that previous meeting, you all directed staff to look into an urgency ordinance to temporarily amend the city's short-term vacation rental regulations in the residential zones. Recall that the city's current ordinance allows those residential dwelling units in certain commercial zones in the city to be used as a short-term vacation rental. Of course, with an application, permit, payment of TOT tax, operation standards, et cetera, et cetera. What the proposed ordinance, as drafted before you tonight, does is allows for the temporary use of all residential units in the city, so that's in the residential zones, commercial zones, anywhere in the city, as a short-term vacation rental, subject to an application and demonstration to the city manager that the short-term vacation rental is being rented to individuals directly impacted or displaced by the January 2025 Los Angeles County wildfires. The, the ordinance as drafted makes it subject to the city's TOT tax. That's once again up to you guys' discretion. And then all other applicable operational and use standards that would otherwise apply to a short-term vacation rental use. As noted in that last bullet point, the one blank that I did leave, because I didn't want to kind of get out ahead of myself, should the city council decide to proceed, would be a sunset date. So that is, that is left entirely blank. So should the city council feel that the potential amendment is, is advisable, we would request that you guys decide the date for which no more short-term vacation rental use. In those residential zones, we would basically just go back to the, to the prior rules. Next slide, please. One of the other topics that was discussed was renter protection, specifically in the context of a lease maybe says, hey, you don't, you can't have a pet, or you're only allowed two, two people in here. And, and whether or not we wanted to potentially do something local to say, hey, if you now house displaced family with, you know, two more people and two more pets, whether or not the city wants to provide some level of renters' protection. The governor issued an executive order that addressed this very issue and prohibits landlords from doing that exact thing, basically using the unlawful, unlawful detainer process, excuse me, to evict a tenant for violating a term of their lease that would otherwise prohibit them from sheltering one or more people displaced by the recent fire emergency. All other lease terms would remain the same, and this is in effect until March 8th, 2025. Because this is, order is in place, there is, from my perspective, little to no practical impact if the city adopting its own unless this council felt that exceeding going past March 8th, 2025 was advisable. As the city attorney, I, I must note that any intrusion into a private lease arrangement or agreement may draw the ire of one or both parties. Once again, the city's police power to address emergencies is preeminent. Obviously, it's, it's, it's been done all over, so I'm not going to come up here and say you guys cannot do it. But of course, I will say that the risk of, of a legal challenge should be weighed in the efficacy of, of kind of any local ordinance, particularly in light of the state order already in effect until March 8th, 2025. Next slide, please. Finally, there was some discussion about a property, you know, a tax or a penalty, about property vacancy, basically kind of as a, as a corollary to say, hey, that, you know, those displaced by the LA Fire, by the LA Fires could really use all those empty units. Over the past few years, past few years, some cities have adopted something like that. However, it's been done via a ballot measure, it's basically a tax, that residential parcels that are quote-unquote vacant, and that's kind of where, where the devil is in the details, how that's defined really, really does matter. Last year, the vacant residential property tax in San Francisco was successfully challenged at the trial court level, so that's not binding precedent. However, it is kind of, you know, something that that is out there. The city has appealed that decision. My office is, of course, monitoring it, but just something to keep in mind. And so while I, you know, a vacant residential property tax is possible, something like that, you know, could not be done via urgency ordinance. It would need to go, go to the, go to the voters via a tax measure. And then, of course, be kind of very carefully crafted to avoid potential legal challenge with, you know, basically the foundational, hey, it's vacant, but then you have all kinds of exceptions for a whole, whole host of, you know, different scenarios. Next slide, please. So in sum, Mr. Mayor, staff recommends that the city council receive that update and then consider adopting that urgency ordinance as, as adopted, excuse me, as, as attached with, of course, direction to, if, if is the city council's decision to include a sunset clause on, for the ordinance. As I stated earlier, myself and Madam Deputy City Manager, of course, are here for any questions. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is the March 8th, 25 date, are you recommending that we coincide our expiration to that date regarding on what the governor did or?
So once again, I'm not, that, the governor's order only deals with renters' protection, right? So that's, he basically, as of right now, that order says that if I bring in someone that's displaced, until March 8th, 2025, my landlord is prohibited from, you know, evicting me. That is, to me, I kind of view that as potentially different than the short-term vacation rental, because that's kind of different. That is you housing someone versus you saying, I'm going to rent my, my place. But once again, if the council believes that there's some efficacy in coinciding with that, that is entirely your guys' discretion, I take no position on that one way or the other.
And when we come up with a date, it could be a date to either bring it back before that date to decide whether to extend it or to just end it on that date? We could do either one tonight, correct?
Correct. It, it, it is a bit, well, I mean, yes, the short answer to your question is yes. Due to the emergency that we are trying to address, and then via the urgency ordinance, I, I would advise some, you know, you know, some deadline, even if that's further out than potentially you all want, and then just say with a direction to say, hey, let's bring this back earlier, and if we don't think we need it, we can get rid of it. Having it without one is, is not advisable.
Yeah, no, I didn't mean without one, but would, we could specify in the ordinance whether it comes back to us before then or whether it just ends, because there's a difference there.
Correct, yeah, so, so it wouldn't be in the ordinance itself. It would, you guys would basically just, if this, if this is the world of council, we want to adopt this, it's, it's, it's over, sunsets. Let's pick out a date far in advance, direct staff to come back in, in three months, you know, before then, before that thing, to, to consider this again.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions on my left? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's not actually a question, I'm looking at number D in the ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's not actually a question. I'm looking at number D in the ordinance. Sunset clause, the provisions in this section shall become inoperative on October 24, 2025. That's the sunset date proposed?
No, no, no. So I apologize. So that sunset clause, these are kind of two different things, because our short-term vacation rental ordinance as drafted has a sunset clause of October 24, 2025.
Yeah, that's.
Correct. And so, but so if you keep going down, Mr. Mayor, Protem, to section E3, that is really what we are looking for, because that sunset clause D, without that added language in E, only applies to those units, those residential units in the commercial zones, in the allowable commercial zones. So how you should view this ordinance is subsection E is really kind of a standalone, right? It basically, this is what it allows in all residential units in the city, either in the residential zones or commercial zones, period. Yeah.
But right now, the sunset date is October 24.
That is correct.
Proposed. Now, in three, it says insert date, so we could change it by inserting some other date. Is that correct? Or back in D, it says the sunset clause for this is October 24.
Correct. And so that was, I forget the last time that we brought the short-term vacation rental ordinance to the city council, but whenever that was, that is when that date was established. So for the units that are legally operating in our city today, so they're residential units.
They'll stay the same way, period, no matter what we do.
Correct, yeah.
This is for someone else to go, oh, well, okay, because of the thing I want to help, I want to make, I want to rent my house out of short-term rental.
Correct.
And they'll be able to do that, at least if this passes the way it's written, they'll be able to do that until October 24.
No. So they will only be allowed to do that with whatever date you guys decide and tell me to put in here.
Insert date.
Correct.
Ah-ha. Okay. All right. Good. Thank you.
Councilmember D? No? Anyone on the right? Okay. I have one more question regarding the total occupancy tax. That only applies to those that rent for 30 days or less, correct? Because that's the tax on short-term rentals. If they register their property to be able to do this, and the tenant is in there longer than 30 days, they're not subject to any total occupancy tax. Is that correct?
Right. So, but yes and no. So the transient occupancy tax is a tax due upon, based off of the agreement that you make, right? So to answer your question, they would need to rent their home for more than 30 days on an initial agreement. You can't bootstrap. You can't say, hey, you can stay here for two weeks, at the end of two weeks, I'm going to let you stay for another two weeks, at the end of that two weeks, they let you stay another two weeks, oh, poof. Because, you know, the way the law is drafted, you're supposed to be collecting the TOT tax every night.
Right, right, right. Okay. And if they have a lease for 31 days, they're good without a tax. Okay. Thank you. Anyone in our audience wishing to comment on this item? Okay. Madam City Clerk, do we have anyone online?
Yes, we have one, we have two hands. Scott Hayes, your three minutes will begin once you begin speaking.
Good evening, everybody. I've been in the past pretty vocal against short-term vacation rentals. I don't think there's a whole lot here that's objectionable. I think it should be for a relatively short time, like 60 days. I don't think that people are needing short-term help much beyond that. After that, they're going to be looking for long-term, which is fall under our regular ordinances. One thing I would like to see is anyone who's had any kind of short-term vacation rental citation should not be eligible for this program. They've already shown that they don't care about the rules, and they should not be able to benefit from this. Additionally, I feel like I went online today, and there are well over 100 short-term rentals listed on Airbnb. I was able to locate positively with an address many of them very quickly. So I'd like to kind of get an understanding of where the breakdown is, where, you know, are we not enforcing? Do people just not care? Is our host compliance partner doing their job? It's really kind of atrocious that we have that many short-term vacation rentals when our ordinances say otherwise. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else online?
Tony Higgins, your three minutes will begin once you begin speaking.
Yeah, good evening. A couple of very quick points. Given the amount of abuse that we have by landlords of the short-term vacation rentals in residential areas right now, I hope that whatever process you put in place to verify that the renter actually is from an impacted, a fire-impacted person, is a fire-impacted person, that that process has teeth and works, because, you know, we got a lot of unscrupulous short-term vacation rental landlords in our area. That's number one. Number two, the sunset clause is a very good thing. We all saw what happened during COVID, where the dining desks got put out there, the lanes got closed, and they stayed closed for the one lane on Pier Avenue in each direction got closed, and they stayed closed for three years. And ultimately, it became the new norm, and the late closures will pass through without even so much as the CCO review. So I worry about the short-term rental and the sunset clause. I see no reason for that to go over 60 days. But, you know, that's probably not terribly important. What is important, that it is established, and especially for residential districts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Penney, your three minutes will begin once you begin speaking.
Hi, yes, Laura Penney here. I submitted any comment on this. I appreciate the city's efforts in drafting this urgency ordinance, and my interest in this is to not create more or exhaust staff resources on this. But I would like to see short-term rentals allowed just for those affected by the recent Los Angeles wildfires. That's literally what this was about. To further strengthen the response, consider waiving permit fees by allowing ADUs and vacation rentals to help these individuals. They've already done it in LA County, Incorporated, El Segundo, Santa Monica, Beverly Hills. And additionally, revise the definition of the non-conforming residential units to allow more flexibility in providing temporary housing. As the ordinance is currently written, it's only allowed for those established before October 24, 2019, which limits the housing supply. It prevents newer residents from assisting in this response. So if we're going to do this, also implementing a temporary parking permit program so that people can park their vehicles if they've been displaced and have it be on a 30-day renewal period, instead of having the city manager do it case-by-case. Any efforts that our city can make to helping those who have been affected by the fires, if this will help alleviate, is greatly appreciated. So I do appreciate your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I do not see any additional hands raised.
Okay. Bring it back to council for deliberations. I have a question regarding temporary parking permits. Are we able to add into this the ability to issue temporary permits? Or is it a recommendation, do it case-by-case, or what would be the best first step?
Correct, yeah. So the Madam City Manager kind of already has that discretion.
Has that discretion?
Once again, on a case-by-case, you know, once again, I did want to make one clarification. I want to make sure that the ordinance as drafted only applies to those that are impacted by the fires. Maybe I was unclear in my presentation. I apologize. That is crystal clear. That is the key requirement. You need to show to Madam City Manager, her designated, how you are housing those either impacted or displaced. Once again, we didn't, we don't have the, you know, that could take the form of numerous different things. That's why it's her discretion.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone on my right? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I don't feel the need to modify our municipal code with regard to short-term rentals. I think that emergency component of folks who need a place to stay now is gone. We heard from our Red Cross spokesperson that out of the thousands that were temporarily housed in Red Cross facilities, we're down to several hundred, I think 450, that are looking for more permanent housing. And I've had discussions with dozens of realtors over the last couple of weeks, and the need is not short-term housing. The need is more permanent housing. And I think the best way that our community can help those folks is to, you know, we had a caller who said there were a couple hundred short-term rentals in the city. And if those people really wanted to help the folks who are impacted, they would immediately cease their legal operations and open their vacant or unoccupied properties to neighbors who are desperate for a place to call home as they try to rebuild their lives, you know. We have folks who are unfortunately trying to exploit those who are most vulnerable right now when they should be showing compassion. And I think a way to show compassion is to make your housing available for folks who are looking for a place to live while they try to figure out their lives. And the short-term component is, I think that ship has sailed. I spoke to three realtors today when we were at our donation drive, and they are all feverishly working, and all their connections, they're looking for places for people to live. Miracosta has, I think, 100-plus new students. We've had several in our school district. Redondo Beach has accepted several folks in their school district as well, as have Loyal American Martyrs and the like. So the requirement is not short-term. The requirement is for something considerably more. So I'll say it again, those folks who really care about helping people should stop with their illegal short-term rentals and make those units available for those folks who are trying to rebuild their lives. So that component, I think, we should remove from any further discussion. That's all I have for now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Keegan.
Are we deliberating right now?
We are deliberating. I'll just, I'll make a comment. I'll leave it up to you then. Next. I think that any little bit we can do to help the situation, whether, we don't know how many people are going to take advantage of it. Having worked for the Red Cross, being in shelters is no fun. And the fact that we still have 450 in shelters, they'd much rather come to a place like Hermosa Beach. Now, maybe they can't afford a short-term rental there, but someone coming in and sleeping in an extra bedroom right now, that would be illegal if it was less than 30 days. So they would have no fear of that. They could bring them in. They could charge them a minimal amount to stay, and if they have children, the children then can come to a great school system we have. And if by doing this, it just allows one family to get there, to move beyond that, we welcome them in our community, and I just think that that's something that we can do to contribute and make an honest effort to help those in need in an emergency. So, thank you. Mayor Protem.
So it was about 10 days, maybe two weeks ago, that someone suggested this to me. And my very first thought, right off the top, was what good would it do to rent a place or make available a place for a family for a couple of days, or a week, or two weeks? What they really do need is long-term housing. They would certainly want to rent someplace, buy some furniture, and get the kids in school, and go buy a car, and get their life going again. And renting something for a week or two, short-term, seemed nonsensical. And then it was pointed out to me that when you're living in a shelter and you have nothing, you'd want to do that just to get some breathing room for a week, so that you could look for a place. Maybe they've never been to Hermosa Beach, and they would want to move here just for a week or two weeks, just to go, oh, thank God, we're out of that horrible shelter. We got clean water and a bathroom, and, you know, well, our life is already better, and this is a pretty nice community. Maybe we should start looking for a rental here. And so having come to that realization, I switched my thought from, it really doesn't make much sense for a couple of days or a week, to it could offer some great comfort to someone for a very short term. But tonight, and then that's why I came here this evening, very much in favor of this, with, of course, some parameters, some rules. But then tonight, Councilmember Jackson brought up a point that the fires are essentially under control, and I don't want to debate that, but nonetheless, the number of refugees, if you want to call them that, fire displaced people is dropping rapidly. And so now we're down to 450. Is that number correct? Councilmember Jackson?
That's what our Red Cross.
That's what the Red Cross is, okay.
Said.
So, and it's been so long now that they could easily have found someplace to live, whether it's Hermosa, Santa Monica, whatever. So that seems to make sense to me now, to go that way and say, I really don't need to do all of this, or we don't need to do all of this, to allow short-term rentals in our neighborhoods. But this is a temporary ordinance amending this section. It's not permanent. And if it were for a very short time, that number has dropped from thousands to 450 in two weeks, it may very well disappear in two more weeks. So it seems to me that for the very same reasons that I thought this was a good idea a week, two weeks ago, it might still be a good idea, but only for a very short time, for, as mentioned here a couple of times, 30 days or 60 days. Because in a month or two months, unless there's a brand-new fire starts, and then we have a whole new situation. But for right now, for a month or so, there likely won't be anybody left. No shelters will be empty. And so they could rent someplace for a month and then move on. So if it were sunsetted for 30, in 30 days, then our ordinance goes completely back to the way it was. Of course, the rules that I would propose, if we were going to do this for a very short time, would be to have, make sure that the people renting the places are fire-displaced. Sunset should be 30 days, and anyone who has abused the short-term rental laws in the past is disqualified. Parking permit, I think it would not be too difficult to issue parking permits, temporary parking permits that were only good, okay, so we're going to be revamping the parking in a little bit, and then whether, hopefully, it gets approved, and we move on with that. And in April, I think we're scheduled to start again selling new permits in April. So maybe permits that are issued now or in the next coming weeks that were only good until April 1st might be reasonable, because those people who, once they do come here, rent for a short period of time, the first thing they're going to need is a parking permit if they're in that zone. So whether it's a short-term rental, or they come here and they go, hey, look, there's a very nice house there on Loma Drive. Let's rent that thing, and they sign a one-year lease, the first thing they're going to need is a parking permit. So we should issue them something, an emergency permit for them, so they can get along here until they get settled in and new permits are issued. I think that's important. So I would approve that also. So that's my thoughts on it. If we do this, again, it should be those conditions, and I think the sunset should be 30 days.
Okay. Councilmember Detoy, have any?
Thank you. I appreciate staff for bringing this forward. I-
Thank you. I appreciate staff for bringing this forward. Um, I, you know, just looking at the reviews from illegal Airbnbs that are currently operating, um, I think, you know, this was a good-intentioned item. I think just, we're just too late. Um, one of the reviews said we needed to evacuate from the Eden Fire and were able to book here last minute at one of our currently existing illegal Airbnbs. Um, as talked about, people are transitioning. They want normalcy. They want to have that, you know, they want to get their kids in, back in school. They want to have, you know, kind of the normal life where they're going to sink their roots in either permanently or for, you know, two, three years while they rebuild. Um, and time and time again, short-term rentals have taken out, um, long-term renters, you know, units off the market. So, um, I stand by my thoughts originally. Um, we're almost a month, uh, we're approaching a month since these fires broke out. And as noted, the kind of the evacuees are, those who didn't lose their homes are back in, you know, rehabilitating their areas. Um, so I would not be in favor of, of bending the rules, um, to make this happen. Um, we got the numbers from staff on vacancy rates at our local hotels. Um, you know, anywhere from 40% to 70% vacancy rates. Um, so there's definitely room in our local hotels. I encourage everyone to, you know, who is displaced, to, to come to Hermosa Beach and seek their roots in this beautiful community. Um, but as one of the public commentators mentioned, I mean, just logging on to any of the short-term rental sites, there are plenty of options available. So I'd love to make sure that our enforcement is, is also strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I mean, I, I still think any little bit we can do, uh, to help out those, whether it's a family coming in to stay in an extra bedroom in the house, any, anything that can introduce them to the community and hopefully have them. But if Councilmember Seaman, if you'd like to make a motion based on what your position is, I'd be happy to entertain it on the 30 days.
I'm, I'm really conflicted on this, honestly. I, um, again, you know, I'm, none of us ever make up our mind when we get here. I don't think we should. I don't, certainly. And I've been known to change my mind, and I've gone back and forth and back and forth on this. Uh, Councilman Jackson's, uh, suggestions are certainly valid, and Councilman Detoy makes a good point. I think we maybe are too late. Uh, it's a valid point that if we can help one person, that's reasonable. But we have a, any number of short-term rentals already that are legal, that are in the zone. And if someone wants to come here for a week or two or three, there's plenty of places for them to do that. Um, having someone stay in your home, I don't think there's, that's against the law now. Shouldn't be. If you bring- Company moving to my house, and it's my business and my house, I certainly should be able to do that and rent out a bedroom to them without having to pay a occupancy tax or anything else. Is that the way it is in our city right now? For a, for about a bedroom in your own home?
Correct. Yes. If you, if, if you rent out a bedroom in your own home for less than 30 days, that is a, that is a transient use. Now, if it's for, as, as Councilmember Keegan said, you have 31, you know?
Right.
That's, that's your business. Do whatever you want.
Well. Okay. So, um, I guess bottom line is, no, I don't want to make that.
Okay. Yeah, that was my point about the bedroom. I was thinking, not necessarily people that can afford a short-term rental on the strand somewhere that are renting out for, you know, multiple thousands of dollars a month. Uh, I was thinking of just anyone that has an extra bedroom in their home. They want to rent it out to a couple or someone that may have kids, introduces them in the community. If it just helps one, that was my point on that. But, um, you know.
Yeah. I, I also don't want this to become, uh, a green light for everybody to go, oh, cool, I'm going to get started in that illegal rental thing in the neighborhoods and stuff.
Yeah.
I live, I live right, very close to some illegal-
Uh huh.
-short-term rentals. It's impossible to prove.
Yeah.
And it's, it's annoying and irritating, and I don't like it, and I don't want it. And I don't, wouldn't, you know, this is a different thing. This is a charitable idea. It's, it's well-meaning. I, I agree with all of that. But I also have to say that's, I think we are kind of late. We've kind of missed the, uh, would have been a great idea on day one. But now, I don't know.
Thank you. Councilmember Keegan?
I make a motion to receive and file the item.
Second.
Okay. I don't, we don't really need to do it, but that's fine. We can do that. Sure. Okay. Puts closure on it. Uh, without objection, Madam City Clerk, let's do a vote. Okay, the, the votes are up on the screen. Madam City Clerk?
Motion carries, 5-0.
Okay. Thank you. And next on our agenda?
17B, discussion and possible changes to the citywide residential parking program update.
Good evening.
Good evening. Still evening. Yes. Uh, let's talk parking.
Oh, boy. Our favorite topic, isn't it?
Short-term rentals and vacation, and, uh, parking. I think it does a dead heat for the, the top two, most favorite topics.
You got it.
The level of joy and, and smiles on your faces when these items come up brings, brings, uh, makes my, makes my soul warm. So, uh, just a quick, uh, background on this item. Last council meeting, um, the staff gave a robust update on our parking program, mainly focusing on the technology. So I want to acknowledge Councilmember Simon, yes, you made a comment last, last meeting about it's unfortunate that we're coming kind of at the 11th hour. And I do acknowledge that. I think the focus at that time and this time was really on the technology aspect. We'll talk about feedback of the program in, in a bit, but the vast majority of complaints we did receive last year at the staff level was due to the, the clunkiness of the technology product. Hard to apply, hard to upload documents, a lot of frustration. So we're talking about 25, 30, 40 people, just to put some numbers behind it, actually complaining. So we'll, we'll get into the feedback in a bit. Um, just again, just give a brief overview of the program real quickly, just to set the ground rules as they exist right now. Again, um, all this was adopted January of 2024. Essentially, three, a limit of three permits per resident. That's two stickers and one guest pass. One resident has one address. There's a robust proof-of-residency requirement that you're all quite familiar with. We did, the, the council did eliminate the replacement of lost or stolen guest permits. Council also limited the one-day guest special event permit. And there is a two-year penalty box. We call it the penalty box. If you, uh, you know, tried to enter or, uh, submit fraudulent documents, you're put in a kind of a, a two-month moratorium for, uh, receiving permits in the future. And then again, raise that price to $60 per year. So this table is the same from last, um, meeting. Essentially, the takeaway message is column from the far right, the 2023 total versus the 2025 total, apples to apples, two years, one before the permit program, one after. So we heard, you know, the direction of council of this, you know, program, were mainly three main outcomes, right? Reduce potential abuse of the per, permit program, clarify and streamline some of the processes. And three, and most importantly is make, you know, a very precious resource, parking available to our residents. So you'll notice, uh, prior to this, this permit rollout, we had almost 9,000 permits out in the community. Now we have about 6,100. So as I mentioned before, the majority of the feedback was, you know, technology-based. And then, you know, the, we, we do appreciate the support from council last meeting of letting staff move forward with, with a new vendor, which we're excited about. Just want to run through some of the feedback we've received. Again, anecdotally at the staff level, again, this is more, we're talking about a handful, less than five or six over the, the course of, of the program. Again, out of the 6,000 permits issued, this is, these are some of the issues that, uh, residents have come unsolicited to us, um, talking about, which you may want to talk about in a bit. One of them was the, uh, the frustration about inability to have, whether it be a housekeeper, a construction worker, or someone to come into their house, uh, and not have that, that permit available for them. There are options currently. There is actually a daily permit for $12 a day to park from the hours of eight to five. There also is a contractor's permit up to, you know, up to 30 days. So if someone is doing work at your house, there are alternatives. So there are workarounds, which we presented to people that have complained, and they've been, uh, satisfied with those, with those workarounds. A few applicants expressed frustration with proof of residency. I think the, the ordinance, or the resolution that you guys passed was pretty clear. Just mild annoyance, I will call it, by having to provide a bank statement. Um, but again, no, no real pushback other than just these, these side comments. Thirdly, uh, feedback regarding registering vehicles at Hermosa Beach address. I think that, you know, what staff had heard from you guys at the time was that making sure that the number one priority, make parking available for those that live here. And I think that is reflected in the, uh, the feedback to this, this portion. And lastly, the, uh, the guest permit. I think we've heard some comments about, uh, the guest per, program going away. Again, I think the goal and direction was to make parking available for permanent residents on a long-term basis. I think, and just a brief note, um, one note that's not on here, and I'll talk about this slide in a second, is that there is an option for that fourth permit, as I mentioned in prior, in the prior meeting. It requires a little bit of more zoning review to see if the property itself and the surrounding area can support more vehicles, that fourth vehicle. So just as a refresher, we only had, of the 6,000 permits issued, we only had five requests, five official requests for that fourth permit, and only two had met that, met that qualification. So the council, in its wisdom, did offer a, an off-road for that fourth permit option. But for whatever reasons, that, that option has not been exercised as much as we thought it would at the council or at the, uh, the resident level. And lastly, we've talked about that two-year penalty box. So 6,000 permits, a big reduction from the 9,000, and then compliance. Uh, unfortunately, we did have 19 residents that are, are now on a two-year penalty box for, um, for, you know, a variety of reasons, uh, submitting altered registration, uh, altering, submitting altered banker credit card statements, and then missing stickers on out-of-state vehicles. So again, a very, very high compliance rate. So all in all, again, just to summarize before we open up for discussion, reducing the amount of permits, making sure that, uh, residents have first priority and availability for parking, and also, um, making sure that residents do comply with the program, again, uh, has been a success on the staff level. So, um, just as a refresher, it was mentioned before, uh, council did approve, uh, last, last meeting to delay the initial start of their permit program. The original start date was February 3rd of this year, obviously in a few days away, not very feasible. So as of right now, um, as it stands, the tentative start date of the permit season would be April 1st of this year. That allows us enough time to implement the technology upgrades, but also residents are jumping at the bit to, to access their, their permits for next year. So staff feels that April 1 is a, a solidified deadline where we can meet those technology installation needs, yet, you know, respond to the community who really wants these, these permits renewed ASAP. So with that, I'll open up to discussion. Any questions? And thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, so this evening, we could make minor changes to the system, and you would be able to implement in time for the new passes. Correct?
I wouldn't be comfortable giving a blanket, yes, we can accommodate every request by April 1. I think, I'll, I'll give the competent answer, is it depends. If you're changing, I'll give you an example. If you're changing some of the residence requirements, that really doesn't require much-
Right.
-staff and vendor time to change. However, if there are significant changes to the amount of permits or the process of permits, I, I would err on the side of it would delay in, um, the go-live date of, of April 1.
So for example, if we were to change it from three to four permits allowed per residence, would that be something that could be changed, or is that, um, going to create too many hoops?
It technically could probably, most likely be installed. I just, it depends on the parameters also. I think one of the, the confusions is a sticker versus a permit, a guest hanger. I think it revolves around that. Um, three to four, it could, it could possibly be done.
What if we, if we implemented one-day permits? Right now, we don't issue any. But back to the way we used to, if we implemented that, would that be something that could be done now, or would that take longer?
Yeah. So I think the end goal of that would be everything online, right? So I would give a caveat to that. A one-day permit is, the, the staff does have, we have the capacity to issue that, but it would be more of an ad hoc basis. So what we could not do and meet the April 1 deadline is offer online options to purchase one-day permits. That would require system configuration that I, I'm, I'm almost certain that we, we wouldn't be able to work with the vendor to institute. Essentially, it's a, it's a side program. So if council does direct staff to issue the one-day permits, it would be more of a manual coming into the, to, to the office here in the Revenue Services Department. So not ideal, but, um, workable.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, anyone on my left? Mayor Proten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Uh, Brandon, um, a couple of things. Um, five applications for a fourth permit. That's all we had in the year period previously. And two of them were approved.
Yes.
Three were denied.
Yes.
What was the grounds for the three denials?
I'd have to connect with their community development department, who actually reviews that. But I'm almost, I'll speak anecdotally. It's usually, it's usually the garage. The idea that the garage is meant for, you know, per code, to house a vehicle. And if somebody has a garage, I won't speak, you know, I don't know the specifics of each of the five cases. But I'd surmise that it was, again, it was determined that there is ample parking per the, the way the house is zoned, to be able to have an, an extra vehicle without having a need for that fourth permit.
Okay. And that makes cer, complete sense. However, as I read the, uh, the ordinance that we have, uh, it says a single extra permit in excess of the maximum three per residence may be issued by the city manager or designee upon assuring that there exists a number of registered vehicles to different and unique drivers, et cetera, et cetera, special, specific property, which does not have adequate onsite parking, as you just said. Um, "The burden of proof shall be upon the applicant, and the city manager shall develop adequate application standards to the satisfaction of the city manager. And then the city manager or designee decision shall be final." So I would like to know what those adequate application standards are. Not that I'm saying that they're wrong, or we shouldn't have those, or we should have different ones. I'm only saying that there's, it, what, what that says basically is that if you apply for the fourth one and you get denied, like these three people did, it's, we don't really know why they got denied. And that's what I'm asking. What are those special things? So maybe city manager can, can enlighten us with that.
We can bring that information back to you. I can also search to pull up some of those documents, but I don't have that on hand right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm not saying that those three people, and I think I've spoken to probably all three of them, uh, have explained to me that they have a problem with this. And they seem to be befuddled, why did I get the fourth one? I don't have any parking. I have three cars. They're all registered correctly, three separate people, and so on. So what, why? And that's all I'm asking, is why. And I think if we're going to tweak some things, that that might be one thing that we might look at. Not to open the floodgates and let everybody who wants one get one, but find out what the criteria is for being denied and, and make sure that it's right, that it's fair. Uh, that's one thing. Um, I had a person, oh, I wanted to ask you something on a little different, same topic, but a little different thing. At our last meeting, I asked you about the maximum hours parking in parking lot A, B, and C. Because of, uh, the, the Lighthouse and, uh, the Comedy and Magic Club, their shows go on much longer than two hours. Uh, and I understand the two hours is from COVID time. That was those, that two-hour limit in, in parking lot A, at least, and maybe the other two also, was, was started during COVID, which is long behind us now. And you've responded that, no, you can now, currently with what we have already, you can go to the meter and pay for up to six hours. Or if you get the app, you can add time up to six hours under our current system, and you will be able to also in the new system. Um, I want to add another business to that, by the way, uh, the Hermosa Cyclery. Uh, and all three of these businesses are iconic Hermosa Beach local businesses. They've been here for many, many years. They're, they're treasured businesses. It's not like it's the, the liquor store in the corner or something. This is, this is something that, that means something to the city. And, and they, people like to rent bikes and go for a long bike ride to Santa Monica and back, and they can't do that in two hours. So they get a ticket because they can't have to drive all the way back to Hermosa and do something and then go back again. So, uh, I imagine maybe other businesses too. But at least there's these three iconic businesses, uh, all very close and adjacent to A, B, and C. Um, and as I understand, that right now, if you were to go out to parking lot A, B, or C, and try and park for six hours, you can't do it.
Yeah. I want to, I want to make a clarification on that. I think, I know what businesses you're talking, you're mentioning. I think there really is a three-hour cap. And I think it was, it was COVID, a COVID restriction. The one caveat, which we're looking to investigate now is, it's in, it's in the coastal zone. So if we were to, if we were to change that restriction, uh, what does that look like from a coastal commission approval? So that's something we're aware of. So I apologize for, for misspeaking on that. But we were, we're very keenly aware of that. The bike business is a perfect example, right? You're not going to go in for two hours and then just have to run back. So-
Well, a more perfect example is the Comedy and Magic Club.
Correct. Correct. Yes.
You can't get up, uh, in the middle of a comedy show and walk across the street, or maybe all the way to lot C, and put more money in the meter. That's, that's-
Yeah.
-kind of ridiculous. And, uh, I would like to see, too, it make sure that that limit is changed. And if it was because of COVID, and COVID is no longer here, I can't imagine the, the, uh, coastal commission having- Commission having much of a problem with that.
Let's stick to questions, and then we can deliver.
Well, this is a question.
Sure, okay.
Thank you. So you don't know the particulars of it, and can you?
Staff will figure out what the methods and alternatives are and options for council to lift that amount, and we'll come back to it a later meeting.
And if we approve this tonight, whether with or without changes, and what they are, and to what extent, will that be able to be included in?
This item right now is just the residential parking permit program, so there's a lot, it would deal with lot C rates and hours, which would be a separate item under this agenda.
So it's not on the agenda at the moment?
No.
Even though you brought it up at our last meeting?
It was a question of park mobile, so I think that was kind of the leading strand. So it was more about the technology aspects which led it. But the scope of this is just the residential parking zoned areas.
Okay. All right. All right, so that's a different issue. Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Detoy? Councilmember Jackson?
Mr. Mayor, just, oh, I was going to say, whenever the council's ready, I can go over the fourth permit application if it's relevant to your consideration. It is online.
Okay.
Is that something you'd like to accommodate? Okay.
Councilmember Keegan? Oh, Jackson?
If I could just make a statement relative to Mayor Protem's question about, so I remember these discussions very vividly. So, and this was based in large part to some of our discussions, Councilmember Sammon. We made a determination that parking passes were based on need and capacity. So, and I use me as an example. I have the capacity to park four vehicles at my house, two in a garage, two in a carport. If I choose to have four sports cars, and do I then get four additional parking permits for the rest of my family members, because I have a car collection that I don't want to put on the street? I mean, so we made the determination that it's based on capacity and need, that if you have a need for five, because you only have a capacity for four, then that was within the purview of the city manager to approve. So I guarantee you, those disapprovals were based on the fact that the folks had the capacity to park, but were choosing not to, for whatever reason. I mean, they chose to turn their garage into a rec room or an office or whatever, and that's fine, that's their prerogative, but then that's not the city's responsibility to give you a place to park your car if you choose not to put it in your garage. That was the discussion we had relative to the capacity, and I would venture a guess that's why those were disapproved.
I completely agree with you, and I remember those conversations, too. You and I, by the way, we were brownneck buddies on this.
Yes, we spent a lot of time hashing these.
We spent a lot of time discussing this, and so in a way, you and I helped write that. And I totally agree with it, and that's the way it should be. I also have a two-car garage and two-car driveway. I don't get a permit at all, and I use my garage. I park my car, and there's no surfboards in there. But there are conditions where people have come to me, and I've asked them the same questions. I said, are the cars registered properly? Yes. How many persons are living in the building? There's three of us. And how many cars do you each have? Well, I have one, he has two, he has one, and so on. So there is no capacity, and we have the proper registration, and we have the proper number of people, and we have lease agreements, and yet, they were denied. So I'm only asking, under what criteria did that happen? Now, if it's what you say, that they just want extra passes because they got a car collection, that's different.
No, and I think those one or two that had these discussions with you need to have that discussion with the city to find out why they, because I, you know, there were obviously some specifics with regard to those one or two.
Right.
And I think the truth is probably somewhere.
Let's move on to questions.
Anyway, this is what we're supposed to be doing here, is deliberating.
We should deliberate after we hear from the public. Right now, we're just asking questions.
All right, well, Madam City Manager, did you want to address the issue now?
I mean, I have a question, Madam City Manager. Currently, the process that we devised was three passes plus a fourth if they qualify. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so, and they all had to be cars that were registered under a different person, correct?
Correct.
So someone could, had two cars register on their names, they would not get two passes, they'd only get one.
There are circumstances, for instance, if there is a student driver, for instance, council was very accommodating for those, you know, very real circumstances, but yes.
All right.
Otherwise, yes. If I may, I believe.
I'm sorry, did you have a question?
Well, I didn't have a question. She was going to answer something for me.
Okay, well, go ahead.
No, I have the question. So it was about the fourth permit and the criteria. So we had three applications that were denied. So those are the three that came to us. I don't have the names to cross-reference if they're the same that came to you, but they were denied because of onsite capacity. And the application that we have online for the fourth permit is clear that they must be registered to unique individuals, they must submit photos or diagrams of their onsite parking availability. We also have the ability to look at maps if the property has that on our GIS. So the number of permits that were reviewed and denied, each of them was denied because of the determination that there was onsite parking.
Okay, so again, I'm, you know, it's the only point that I'm trying to.
Excuse me. Question, just keep it to questions right now, if you could. We'll deliberate later. Thank you.
Having an exchange with the city manager, thank you. I know for a fact that there is, well, all right, I don't have to go into it, but I appreciate what you just said, and as Councilman Jackson and I just discussed, we helped build that law. We talked about that to a great extent, and I totally agree with it. I wouldn't have helped write it that way. But I know that in some cases, there is no capacity, three cars, and denied the fourth, four cars, and were denied the fourth permit.
I would ask that those cases be brought to us in person, by email, however, for review.
For review.
I can let you know if that is, an application had already been submitted, and share with council the documentation that was provided and the determination that was made.
Okay, yeah, and that's kind of, because the rule says that it's to the city manager shall develop adequate application standards, that's fine, and to the satisfaction of the city manager, and the city manager or designee decision shall be final. I think maybe that last part, there might be some way for one of those three people, or all of those three people, to come to say, you know, can we just have a review and look at it again, and make sure that it's correct?
Absolutely.
And that's all I'm asking for.
Absolutely, we can review it again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Detoy? Anything? Okay. Councilmember Keegan? No? No? Okay. I'll wait till we deliberate on this. I don't have any more questions, thank you. If no one does, then let's open it up to, is there anyone in the audience wishing to come down and speak on this?
Riveting subject.
What? Okay, I don't see anyone. Anyone online, Madam City Clerk?
We do, we have Anthony Higgins. Anthony, your three minutes will start once you begin speaking.
Couple of quick points. If you have a, well, let's stop. You say a priority is to get the residents the parking. We have a problem that I've heard brought up over the past two years by at least 15, maybe 20 different residents, and it has been ignored. And that is the May 15 to September 15 residential one-hour zone parking. It used to be, six years ago, that the tricycles came by in the morning and chalked your car, came by an hour later and checked it, and did the same thing in the afternoon, and that happened seven days a week. And we had good enforcement of one-hour parking in the residential zones. Now, you've had at least 15 people complain that since you got rid of the trikes, you can no longer do effective mobile chalking. And what the residents have told you, and I can confirm personally, is that now that we're relying on people walking around and chalking, or whatever you're doing, we're lucky to see a tire chalk in your neighborhood once every two weeks. That's the fact. And the fact is that you've ducked this enforcement problem because we can no longer do mobile tire chalking for six years now, for six years. And you say your priority is getting the residents the parking. There's a breakdown there, and I sure, and even the gentleman who was talking about the problems, giving the presentation, didn't mention that problem. I mean, you're ignoring it. I wish you wouldn't. I wish you'd come up with a solution to enforce one-hour parking in the residential zones, because enforcing it once every two weeks on a given street doesn't work. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else online?
I do not see any additional hands raised.
Okay, anyone else in the chambers? Thank you very much, bringing it back to the council for deliberations. Maybe what we could do is just tackle one issue at a time and see if we have a consensus with it. I know personally, for me, I think that the proof of residency can be lax. I think it's way overdone with this credit card utility. Basically, if your car is registered at your address, and you already sworn to the DMV that you live there, I would think that'd be good enough. I think that this whole bureaucracy of three, or four, if you do this and you go through all, I think we could just get rid of all that and allow four passes to each resident as long as there's four people that have four different cars registered at that address, because there's many people that I know from the community, they didn't apply and get denied, they didn't bother applying because they had a roommate, and they had a fourth person living there, and they couldn't get. So I just think eliminating the whole bureaucracy with the extra, if you do this and do that, it's taxing on our city staff to go through the bureaucracy, and I would agree with ending it. I think enforcement's a problem, we need to do something about the enforcement, and maybe come up with a better system of lost, stolen permits, former tenants, owners, something along those lines, so. Anyone like to go next, Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The last speaker brought up a point with regard to enforcement, and as we move to the LPR reading system, that's going to help with that whole ability of us to monitor and to cite those, and that's why it's important that we move to this system. The great majority of residents are happy with the current parking situation. When you explain to those who may have heard anecdotally about these sweeping changes we made, and you sit down and explain it to them, they go, oh, that makes sense. If I could park six cars at my house, because I have a four-car garage, a carport, and I can park a car in front of my driveway, why should I be, why should the taxpayer subsidize my ability to put four cars on the street where other residents can't park and visitors cannot park? Because it is a subsidy. It is 16 cents a day, I believe, to be able to park on our streets, 16 cents a day. That's revenue that we are not taking in because we've got a car stored there, and many of them are just stored because they're not moving. So I think what we've done makes sense, it's been working. If you are a resident, and the state says, hey, when you move to a new place and you establish residency, you are required to change your vehicle registration. Boom, that's easy. You're required to have a local license change. Boom, that's a requirement. So we said, if you want a Hermosa Beach parking pass, you've got to be a resident. You can't live in Hermosa but have your Arizona and Nevada plates because you don't want to pay taxes or whatever. That's fine, if you want to do that, but don't expect the city to subsidize your parking permits. So that was a great initiative that we made to limit the abuse and to make sure that it was residents who actually lived in Hermosa Beach who were able to take advantage of this very generous parking program. And it's worked. It has worked. Now, not everybody's happy. I talked to a guy who's not happy because he doesn't, you know, he doesn't think that he should have to park in his garage. He can park two cars in his garage, but he wants four stickers to park on the street. He goes, I'm not putting my Porsche on the street. That's fine, that's his prerogative, but he shouldn't expect the taxpayers, the Hermosa Beach taxpayers, to subsidize his car collection. So what we've done has worked. The fact that only four have applied tells you that the majority of folks have the capacity to park. They may choose not to, and yes, it's inconvenient. Yes, we all know how to play the parking game. You've got friends that come over, you park your car on the street so they can park in your driveway and all that stuff. We all deal with that all the time, and that's the price we pay. But we're fortunate that, no questions asked, you can get three parking permits. Despite the fact that I can park four cars at my house, I can still get three parking permits, no questions asked. And now, some people are saying, I should get a fourth, no questions asked? No, that's, you know, we are responsible stewards of public space, and that's why it's important that we made the changes that we did that have worked. Now, we had a speaker earlier who talked about his tenant's inability to get a parking permit. I don't understand that, because if you are a Hermosa Beach resident, you've got your driver's license, you've got your vehicle registered in the state, and you've got a bank statement showing your address, if you're a tenant, you can get a parking permit. The parking permit belongs to that tenant, not to the owner of the property. So I'm not sure what that speaker was referring to, but that tenant is certainly eligible for a residential parking permit if he is indeed a resident of the state, excuse me, of the city. So I think any changes to the extraordinary work we've done, I think is short-sighted. I think what we've done has worked, and I even think we should look at a price increase for this year, because we have to pay for that LPR, we have to pay for that, you know, everybody wants more enforcement of everything, and that comes with a cost. So I don't think it's unreasonable to ask those who are reaping a tremendous benefit to pay a few more dollars, and most folks will be willing to, and then we can have that advanced LPR reading and enforcement that we so desperately need. So I am not opposed to an increase of the parking permit by $20 for the first, 40 for the second, and 60 for the third. And I just think it's important that we right-size the ship, and that those that are benefiting from this parking permit program are also supporting the enforcement mechanism that I think is important for the right balance.
Thank you. Just to clarify, someone can't have five cars or four cars and park them all in the street under this program. They must be specifically registered under different people that live there. So, you know, that's really what this amounts to, and I'm hoping we can get some of there, but, you know, if a compromise means raising, increasing the prices on those, maybe that's a way to compromise it out, to better serve our community and our residents that I think have been severely disadvantaged and kicked on because of the way we went through these reactionary restrictions, so. Someone over here on the left here. Someone over here on the left here. Go ahead. Councilmember Dietrich.
Thank you. I don't think we even picked on, we spent hours discussing this. And, I mean, we have nine thousand, six thousand spots and we're issuing nine thousand permits. I mean, it was a simple math numbers that you can't be issuing more, more resources than we have. We also have allowances for company vehicles and family vehicles. So I think the family vehicles, I'm just asking the staff for clarification. If, you know, my wife and I live in the, in the zone and we have our two cars and then the minivan, you could still get three permits for that household, is that correct? Since it's a family car? We only have two drivers?
They need to be registered to unique individuals.
Because it says family vehicles, if the vehicle's registered to a parent or spouse, assigned family vehicle authorization form is...
For your child.
That's a special exemption for people that have students.
That drive.
Student-driver one. Okay.
We will not let Tessa drive our streets right now.
That's good. Arrest her chief.
Teddy's ready.
You know, knowing that we are already up against this timeline, I am 100% okay with not making any changes this year. It's, it was a hard conversation. We did a lot of hard work, you know, a year ago, hashing all this out. I would like to see another year of data and go from there. And then just a side note, the title of this item is incorrect because it's not a citywide program. It's a preferential area. So I live a half a block out and I don't get to go park at Ray's house all day. So I've got to move it every hour. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dietrich, I'm so sorry. If your total vehicle number, I'm sorry, your total permit number is three to match your total vehicle number, you can get that. It's the fourth permit that needs to be registered to a unique driver. Yes. Yes. And I believe you were one of the ones instrumental in making that clarification.
Wait, the, so the, I thought each vehicle had to be under a different person's name in order to get a permit?
Only above three.
Really?
Yes.
Wow, that's interesting. Okay. Yeah, I thought, I don't know, I heard, you hear complaints from so many about so many things, sometimes you're never sure what's going on. But is there any desire amongst my colleagues to at least lighten up on the proof of residency? Because there's been a lot of complaints about people coming in with a credit card statement, oh, that's enough, you need utility, you need a lease. One would think that if your driver's license is registered under that address, you've sworn to the DMV that this is where you are, and your car's registered at your address, and your mail's coming there, I mean, your insurance is there, you would think that that would be enough instead of the loops that people go through. So I don't know, is there any desire to tackle the proof of residential?
It's, it's been working.
There've been a lot of complaints about it.
It has worked. Where are all the complaints? I have not seen or heard the complaints. Yes, in the beginning, it was a bit wonky because of the system and the uploading and all that. But now, people understand it. I've seen them on social media. Oh, I need to register my vehicle. Oh, I need to get a, make sure I'm consistent with California law and have a driver's license.
Well, it's not so much that, but they come down every year having to bring all these things over and over again. And, you know, their car's registered at their address, their driver's license is, it would seem to me that we could simplify this. Councilmember Keegan?
I just had a question, Steph. What, you have to have three forms of ID, is that the?
No. I believe it's just two, I'll look at the requirements. Yeah, it's registration, as Councilmember Jackson said, and then I think the original intent was utility bills.
Say you want to get a guest pass only. What do you need?
Can I answer that? Because I, this is the discussion we had. And Rob and I, we spent hours on this.
I'd like to hear from the staff what the rule is, though. It's important to find out that we know what the rule is.
We're the ones, we're the ones who made the policy. Okay.
Let's answer.
Bank statement and registration.
No, but if I, if I want just a guest pass?
If you're, yeah, the proof of registration of...
So I need registration and what?
A bank statement.
What about a utility bill? What about a water bill? What about a cable bill? What about all those other sources?
I vaguely recall from watching the council meetings, Councilmember Jackson and Councilmember Stamen can probably refresh my memory, but I think the intent was, it's quite easy to change your, your address on cable bills, a lot of stuff. You actually can go online right now and change your address. I think that was the genesis of the discussion, is that...
Excuse me, on all those bills, there's a site address. Like your cable bill, you have, you have a site, you don't have to get it mailed to that facility, but there's a site address. Same with your, why couldn't you use your tax bill? I mean, it's a site address also, and your name's on there also. I'm just saying, there's probably eight ways. Cal Water, for instance, I have other properties. My site address is on all those.
If I may, the ownership of this site is less at issue for the council policy that, whatever, the council policy that was created. It's more about residency and proof of residency. And so you could have the site address on a utility bill mailed somewhere else, but it doesn't prove residency. And so I think that's, that's where council tightened up...
But you have the vehicle registration.
There's two different things going on. One is a guest permit and one is a vehicle regi, let's tackle one at a time. You were talking about guest permits.
Well, yeah, because that's...
So you don't need a registration for a guest permit, you need...
Correct.
To live here.
Yes. So for the sticker, yeah, you need...
No, for the guest permit.
Guest permit, yeah. You just need to prove that you're living in Hermosa.
So what proof do you need for a guest permit?
Proof of residency.
What proof of residency do you need? Can you show up with a water bill, a phone bill, a...
It's on the website.
Shows the residence on there and...
If I'm, if I'm a land, own a home and Councilmember Keegan is a friend staying from out of town, I have to prove, it's on my account, it's the owner of the property. So I have two stickers, I want to give Councilmember Keegan a guest pass. I, it's under my purview. The guest pass is supposed to be meant for anyone that's staying at your house. So the guest permit would count towards my three permits. He's not, he doesn't have his own separate account. So it's the resident in the house is entitled to two vehicle stickers and a guest permit. So I would be the one, in this instance, I would be the one applying for that guest permit, not someone who's coming from out of town.
So if they don't have a registration, they don't own a car, they have to prove that they live here, and apparently a cable bill, a phone bill, isn't enough.
Right.
They need to provide what?
Bank statement.
And the driver's license.
And a driver's license.
Yes.
And not and a driver's license, and/or... No. Because the, the current requirement is vehicle registered, vehicle registered in the state, excuse me, in the city, a driver's license showing a Hermosa Beach address, right? If you don't have a car, because we, the reason we discussed this, because we had several people last year who said, I don't have a car. Okay, that's fine. You don't have to have a vehicle registration in that case, but you still have to have a driver's license and a bank statement. Because we took off the lease, the electric bill, and the cable bill because of the, the folks' ability to make things up.
I'd like to just make one distinction there. And this is specific to a particular person. They came down here and spoke one night when we were talking about all this. He says, I live alone, I don't have a car, but I want a guest pass so my son comes to pick me up to drive me places and so on. I want a guest pass. And that's, we changed that to say, you don't have to have a driver's license because you don't have a car, why would you have a driver's license in some cases? The thing is, you have to prove that you live in Hermosa Beach. So it's too easy to fix a cable bill or some other baloney, but it's not so easy to fix a bank statement or, what were the two, two requirements? You don't have to have both. As I recall, it was either/or, a bank statement or a, what was the other one?
If I may, so we have the standard rental or lease agreement that's signed within the last thirty days. And so this is just straight from our website, which was updated after the last council policy decision. The current bank statement or credit card statement or, yeah.
So you can use a credit card statement also.
You could lose it?
You could use a credit card statement also.
Yes.
We had a complaint from an email just recently where they provided a bank statement and that wasn't good enough.
So there are nuances to, so you're likely hearing just the end result, but they're not showing you what they may have provided to us. And so if you have names, we can tell you, we keep copies of the application digitally, and we can tell you what was submitted and what was...
I'm just trying to make it a little easier for...
Yeah, and what fell apart.
Well, they may produce a bank statement for the SNL Foundation. It doesn't, it's not you. You can't, that's not proof. So it has to be a bank statement or a credit card. And that makes perfect sense. Can I move on to another point?
Okay, sure. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I'm looking at this, the parking permit program review, and it says permitting the, currently permitting the issuance of a new pass in the event of tenant turnover at a specific residence with a signed lease by the property owner of record. The previously issued residential parking permit shall be canceled upon showing of a new residence at that, at any specific residence. That's the way it is now, correct? So if you move in, you can get a new permit and the old permit is canceled. And if that person gets caught using it, then he goes to parking hell for two years.
A slight, a slight nuance to that is the new tenant would be entitled to two new stickers, but the council, the resolution says that the guest permit is not transferable. There's a, there's a...
Okay.
So I believe that the guest permit is what is kind of, has been a hangup.
So again, a person has come to me and said, I read the thing, that's me, I just moved in in December, it was a few weeks ago, I just moved into December, they're not issuing new permits until now April 1st, and they won't give me a permit, one single parking permit for my car, and I'm willing to pay a whole year of fee, sixty dollars. But they won't give me a permit. Is this, is there something wrong with this? Am I misreading this? Or was that person kind of got it mixed up? That's, that's my question.
I'll defer to council or city manager Suja Lowenthal to talk about. I think I agree with, and wholeheartedly, that it is case by case, because right now, the way it would work is if somebody moves out, that new tenant is entitled to two stickers, not the guest pass. So not knowing the individual particular situation of...
No, he just wants a parking pass so he doesn't have to put money in the meter for the next four months.
Proof of turnover and residency. They comply with all the registration and all the information on the website. Sticker's theirs.
Great. And I don't have a problem with it.
Right. And if you have an individual who may have experienced something that seems like a breakdown from what we're sharing, please let us know. So Brandon's absolutely correct that with a new tenant that's moving in, the proof of residency is very important. And so we can absolutely provide them with residential permits.
Signed lease.
Right, right. They have to have a rental agreement where the previous tenants were issued, so the new tenants have to have a rental agreement. And if there were previous tenants that were issued parking permits, they can still obtain, as you guessed, the three residential parking permits. The property owner, so this might be the tricky part, maybe there's an off-site property owner. So there are a lot of nuances. The property owner has to provide, has to complete an affidavit of tenancy that is provided by our team. And so we can do that. And then that would list both the old tenants and the new tenants, and we can go, then go ahead and cancel the old permits.
This just says simply a signed lease by the property owner of record. There is no affidavit in the, in the law itself here in the ordinance.
But if there were, right, I'm sorry. If there were passes that were already issued for the year in order to issue new passes...
Oh, so then, then he has to provide, I don't see where that's in here, but I can see that, I guess. Why wouldn't a landlord who's kind of more than half, well, first of all, you rent to somebody without a lease of some sort, you're kind of really not doing it right. But that's fine. So again, this is a person who somehow got it wrong and asked for a permit. He said, I don't care what it, I'll pay the whole year if I can just get one between now and next April. And he was denied that. So there must be something...
So the guest, maybe it's the guest permit? The guest permit is a little bit trickier. That one is not reissued because we're only issuing one guest permit per residence...
Right.
Per address per year.
No, he just wants to be able to park his car. He doesn't care about...
So the regular permit, so I'm, we're happy to look at it again and I can share with you what the outcome was.
Then I'd like to bring up something that, if you don't mind, like to bring up something that is not in here at all, except a, again, a person came to me and said, I have a problem because I have a car that's registered to Hermosa Beach, but for privacy reasons, I don't put my home address on there, I put my mailing address, this is a PO box. And so I come down to get a permit and my car registration is a PO box, and they won't give me a permit. I went to the DMV site to look up the, what's the story with that? And it says California auto registration documents include both a registered owner's mailing address and residence address. You can have either one of them, well, you could, you can have your PO box on, on the certificate you take, drive around your car with, but your registration, the other document, has your residence address on it. So I'm assuming that that person should take not only, not just the little card that they give you to show the police, but your actual registration card that expires once a year and so on, where the sticker's stapled to it. That would show your mailing address. You can bring that in and get a permit.
Correct. Because people, people...
What?
So yes, folks have their ma, no, no, folks have their mail sent elsewhere for safety reasons, you know, their mailbox is not secure, things like that. But yes, they're, they're, the true registration does show what the registration address is.
Yeah.
The actual address.
So, all right, well, I'm, as we're eliminating these things, I'm leaning more and more toward not making any changes. So there are some changes, like for instance, the, the problem that you couldn't get a pass if you're the new tenant in an apartment building. Well, we covered that. We fixed that. We fixed a lot of things. And I have to, Councilmember Jackson, honestly, we worked long and hard on this stuff. And, and as the time went by, I collected these complaints in addition to the ones you have here and said, well, there's something wrong here. Maybe we need to tweak this, and maybe we need to tweak that. And maybe we do, I don't know. But at this point, I can't really see anything that really needs changing at this point.
Councilmember Stamen, if I could just throw something out there? Because you did mention the DMV, the fact that you go to the DMV to, you swear that this is where you live and you can have that on your car registration and it's not on your license. And I would think that would be enough to prove residential for that. And I think that Councilmember Keegan and myself are trying to make things a little bit easier for these proofs of here and there. And so if you'd be willing, maybe we can come to a compromise where if, if your car is registered at the DMV at your address and your driver's license is at your address, we can eliminate all these electric bills, credit card statements, cable, cable bills, leases that can be forged anyway, and just simplify the whole process and come up with DMV registration. And we've eliminated this proof of residency, that people have to come down every year to continue to...
There are two different requirements.
Well, it's a, it's, we're using the DMV.
Auto registration is a matter of having your home address on the registration.
Yeah, right.
That's for the car that you want to get a sticker for.
Yes, the car.
Proving your place of residence is another story. It's a different thing. So everyone pretty much has a bank statement or a credit card. And I don't think it's all of this business, as you put it, all of this business is not included in this. There's two things you can have, and you don't have to have them both, one or the other. Bank statement or a credit card. Now, there is always wiggle room. It seems to me that on all of these requirements, you can always come to the city manager or the city and say, look, I get that, I understand that, but I don't have a bank account and I don't have a credit card. My husband gives me all the money I need or whatever. And so there's, for some reason, you don't, just don't have those. There's always going to be a little fine line that, that there's room, wiggle room. There's a room to say, you know what? Okay, fine, in this case, we'll accept something else instead. And I think if you can agree to that and say, yeah, no question about it, that there's, you can always come back. Like my friend that says, no, I got all the registration and all the thing, we have no garage, and honestly, they still wouldn't give me the extra permit. There should be a way for him to come back. Like you said, let's bring it back to us, let's look at it and find out what, what actually happened. Let's do it again. So with that in mind, I'm good. I'm okay.
If there is someone in the parking permit, residential parking permit zone that is unbanked, doesn't have a bank account or credit card, and that's plausible, they absolutely should come in and, and there are things we can work through to figure that out, to prove residency.
Yeah.
It's very rare, of course, but that is the beauty of a small city and a team that is willing to look at things individually because we can.
Right. Thank you.
We did get complaints about that. So you can make an exception, allow just showing the lease without having credit card, bank, or anything else?
Well, if they have a lease, a standard rental agreement, that is one form of... Well, if they have a lease, a standard rental agreement, that is one form of proof of residency that's acceptable, that is less than 30 days.
Right, but they complained that they needed to still have something else? Is that incorrect? If it's incorrect, that's fine, we don't need to discuss it anymore.
It would really be helpful if council can direct folks to come to the staff.
Sure.
And we'll workshop every single unique case.
Right, okay, great, thank you so much. Councilmembers.
But to be clear, the driver's license and the vehicle registration are required, period.
So the driver's license, based on the last council discussion, is not a requirement?
Okay, it's a state requirement, as we've said before.
Right, but council didn't, in the end, require it of us.
Actually, I went back and looked at the tape, we did. So I will, I will make that motion today if we need to, to clarify that the vehicle registration, the driver's license, consistent with California law, should show where the person is residing. Two very proof positives forms of identification. I think the two most powerful forms of identification.
So the driver's license, right.
Again, that wouldn't be required on the hang tag because they might not have a license.
Correct.
Well, if we have, if, yeah, I'm curious of the person who doesn't have a driver's license.
No, but I mean, we already established that.
Well, then I think you have to look at the other indicia of residence, residency, and that would be the bank statement or the whatever.
So the driver's license is used for identification purposes? Councilmember Jackson, are you saying that the address needs to match the Hermosa Beach residence?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's where staff was not able to find concurrence amongst three council members at the time.
I thought we made that clear last year, but I will flush that out.
Councilmember Detoy, did you want to say something?
I was just going to make a motion, receive and file.
Oh, meaning?
No, approve, receive and approve, right?
Receive and approve, what?
Well, there's nothing to approve.
It says, update the, update the city residential parking program is what the.
Friendly amendment?
What the recommendation is.
Right, so to be clear, it says, receive an update?
Yes.
And then consider any changes or modifications. So we received the update on the cities by Mr. Walker, so, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
So receive the update, I make a motion, receive the update. Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. I guess that means no one, except Councilmember Keegan and myself, are interested in relaxing this, so we'll move on, there wasn't a consensus to do anything more.
Call a question.
Councilmember Jackson?
And then the update piece is second. You said receive and file.
Correct, yes, 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 so I mean.
So we're bifurcating, right? So this is.
Once again, yeah, we probably don't need a formal motion to receive the update.
Okay.
That was just staff, that was just the recommendation. So if there is a change to the resolution, now is the time to do it.
The change is to clarify the residency requirements to vehicle registration and driver's license consistent with the Hermosa Beach address.
Well, we would need to make a, we would need to have a motion to do that.
That would need to be a substitute motion.
No, well, yeah, we would need a motion to do that, and now you have a motion.
Well, hang on, so I want to be sure that I didn't, I apologize.
He made a motion, I seconded it.
Correct, but I just want to make sure, so Councilmember Detoy, was your motion dispositive of the entire item, or were you saying, let's receive the update and then continue? Once again, your motion still stands, I just want to be sure, if I misspoke, I apologize.
Motion was, we received the update and to move on to the next item.
Okay, correct, so that is the motion on the floor?
I seconded it.
Correct.
And this means we move on, we're done with this item.
Correct, if this motion were to pass.
Would you entertain a friendly amendment to add, to clarify the driver's license requirement that is just consistent with state law?
I think the reason why we didn't agree on this last time was, as we said, the guest permits, and that's why photo, valid photo ID on the website is current driver's license, ID, passport, or military ID.
Well, why don't we then make the driver's license, again, consistent with state law, and if there is somebody who doesn't have either of those two, then the city can look at the other indicia of residency.
Might be better if you want to just make a substitute motion and go ahead with what your changes are to the existing program, so it's easier to clarify.
All right, well, I guess I have two questions. Is there an appetite to raise any of the fees for parking permits?
It's already going up $10, so I'm good with that.
I'm good.
Well, that was last year.
No, it's going up another 10.
It was this year.
Oh, we had 10 a year, okay. Is that going to pay for LVR? But anyway, okay.
It was already built in, that's why we just keep it.
Okay. Well, I will move that we.
You want to make a substitute motion, is that right? Okay, thank you.
I'd like to entertain a substitute motion, that we clarify proof of residency can be established by vehicle registration and driver's license consistent with state law, and that in the event a person doesn't have a vehicle, that means they don't have a registration and don't have a driver's license, if they don't drive, then proof of residency to get that hang tag can be established by bank statement and other indicia of residency.
I'll agree to that if, if we were changing the requirements to add on registration and driver's license, and I'd agree to that if we just take off the bank statement and all the rest and keep it at just vehicle registration and driver's license.
I will second it as you moved, without any other business. Just, all we're doing is adding an additional form of.
Of proof residency.
Yeah, the bank statement and the, and the, and the credit card is still there and intact, and would likely be the usual.
Driver's license.
We're just adding the possibility that if you don't have those for some odd reason, you can use your registration or driver's license in addition to that.
I could live with driver's license and vehicle registration. I think those are the two strongest proofs of identification. And in the event that an individual doesn't have a car and doesn't drive, then the other indicia of residency can be used to establish their eligibility.
We're just adding those two to the existing list.
Well, I thought I understood that you're adding the driver's license and the registration as proof, and then you don't need the bank statement.
No, that isn't what he said.
So you need the bank statement and the registration currently, and you want to add the driver's license.
And, or, you need a bank statement or a credit card statement, or registration and driver's license.
You always need a driver's license and registration. Again, that's consistent with California law. All we're doing is asking them to show what they're supposed to have per the state of California, right? If those two are shown, I'm comfortable that shows you're a resident. If those two, if you can't produce those two documents, then you have to look at bank statements or other documents.
Same thing, okay.
Well, no, it isn't. We're actually making it better and easier, I think.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, we're making it easier and better that if you have a registration and a driver's license, that's enough. You don't need a bank statement or a credit card statement, that should be enough.
Yep.
Okay, and we're making it easier then in a way.
Registered to your Hermosa Beach address, yes.
Correct, yes, so I do want to.
Okay, make sure we're clear.
If I may, so, because I want to, so the substitute motion, Councilmember Jackson, will be a, as of right now, here's, here's what the resolution states. Applicant shall provide a proof of residence and a valid vehicle registration at the address requested. You want to change that too is applicants shall provide a valid vehicle registration and a valid California driver's license at the address requested, and then the clarification is in the event, I mean, but that's for the residential parking permit, I don't believe we issue those to those without driver's license. It's only the guest parking permit.
Right, but, but in order to be a guest, in order, if, to get the hang tag, you still have to be a resident.
Correct, yes.
Right? And so if you can't satisfy two of those because you don't have a car and you don't drive, which I find hard to believe.
Who knows, for people who have caregivers.
Understood.
Right, right, right. Then, then I think the bank statement and the other forms of the tax statement or whatever are fine.
Caregivers.
Yeah, no, okay.
So that's good, I think we're simplifying it a little bit.
Move to second.
Okay, the motion was moved and seconded by Councilmember.
Yes.
Keegan, right?
No, I'll second it.
Oh, you, sorry, Mayor Portem seconded it, Jackson made the motion. If there's no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, let's take a vote.
What do we think? Should we? I think to, Ms. Mary.
So that change, that's something that we can implement for this cycle. I do think that if there are individuals that now have to go and make, we don't, we don't know the number of individuals that will apply for parking permits that will have to make the change on their driver's license. So depending on the method that they choose, they may or may not get a same-day card that says this is in process.
Right.
So sometimes it takes three weeks to get that, so just to share that. But Brandon, do you see any other complications with adding that, that the, the license must match the home address?
It's another layer of processing, right? So to get your registration updated, it could take multiple weeks, same thing with driver's license, so it's just.
We would need to get the word out as quickly as possible for people to know that then, right?
It will be part of the updated requirements, and it's really incumbent on the applicant to read through all the materials, but, yeah.
And to do what state laws require them to do since they became residents of Hermosa Beach. One thing we didn't discuss, I shudder to think, employee parking, are we talking about that?
All right, let's take care of this motion first.
Okay.
Great, Madam, Madam City Clerk, could you tally the vote there?
It might take her a second to put it up because this is a separate motion than what we have here, right? She has to type it out there.
Sorry for the extra word.
Maybe you must refresh the meetings pro app, because I know that after a few hours, it does timeout.
Refresh, where's the refresh button?
It says vote in progress.
Where's the refresh?
It says vote in progress.
Top left?
I assume that means that I'm waiting on you guys. Make sure to unfollow.
Mine's stuck on, not connecting to the meeting.
Let me have, make sure you unfollow, things working.
I only need a vote from Mayor Francois.
Excuse me?
Sir, I only need your vote.
You didn't.
Oh, I vote yes.
Okay.
What should I do? Take my eScribe and restart it?
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, I didn't see it on the screen, that's what I was waiting for, so, okay. Motion carries unanimous? Thank you. And Councilmember Jackson wanted to talk about another motion.
Well, I wanted to discuss employee parking because I, you know, right now, we have employees that are parking in parking lots A, B, C, and D, and one of the discussion points we had was to try to move the employees to parking lot C, and to leave all the other parking lots available for visitors and renters, as opposed to folks who are parking there for 12, 14 hours a day. So I'm interested in eliminating that component for employees where they, they can park in parking lot C only, or on the streets as they currently, with the yellow meter, on the yellow meters.
Didn't we do that already?
No.
I mean, a year ago?
No. We talked about it, but we didn't.
Don't you think you got to talk to the people who have.
Yeah, I think, I don't think this was agendas, right, to discuss that.
Right, and so, Councilmember Jackson, I, I apologize, that's my fault. I thought, I thought, I thought, I thought you were referencing subsection C, which talks about the residential parking permit to bona fide employees of businesses within the impacted area, and each owner of a business in the impacted area may be issued one affixed residential parking permit, not the parking lot A, B, and C and D issues. Right, that's a separate resolution.
You need to have them here.
Yeah. So I do apologize, that one's on me, he asked me, the employee, I thought, I thought you were referencing that, not the, the parking lot A, B, C, and D.
Okay.
Okay, so that could be a possible future agenda item, so now we're back to the original motion of receive and file made by Mike Detoy and.
Substitute.
What? Substitute, okay, substitute, carry, we don't need a motion of receive and file, I think we're all done.
Okay.
Beautiful. Okay, Madam City Clerk, oh.
Excuse me.
Sure.
One more question, Brandon, before you go, and, maybe this is a procedural method for Mr. City Attorney. What do we do to bring up the discussion about the six-hour limits in parking lot A, B, and C? Does that have to be an agendas item, another one?
Yeah, you have to be a future agenda item, yep.
Do we, are you scheduled to come back and discuss that program in the first place again soon?
Soon meaning next meeting? It's up to the council's discretion, yeah, we were still investigating what the.
I know, so in other words.
We can.
That's the only way we can bring that up is a agendas item. Okay, that's fine, that's all I need.
But I will say, while staff is still here, if you wanted to make a motion to add it to a future agenda item, it's subject to this matter, you could, you could do that now, I don't know if.
I would, except we do the agendas, future agendas items.
Well, but since we're on the topic, I believe you can bring it up now or.
Fine, and I would like to.
Just because we have staff here in case you have a question about what you want to do.
Okay, seeking a support to bring an agendas item back at our next meeting to discuss the six-hour limit in parking lots A, B, and C, which would also be part of the new program that we're going to be installing there.
So it'd be inclusive of Councilmember Jackson's.
Yeah, correct, I think, I think the best way to do it is.
Add it together.
It's just parking, parking regulations in the, in those commercial parking lots, right?
For both of those things, correct. So.
And that, is that the, that's time, who can park there and how long they can park there for?
I'm just saying that when you go there and you, you put money in the meter and you go to a show, or rent a bicycle or whatever, that you can go to six hours in those three lots.
Okay, okay.
Raising it up from two, is that right?
It's at two now, and two is set during COVID, so.
What was it, pre-COVID? All right, we'll find that out. I'll support, I'll support that discussion coming back.
Anyone else?
So this, well, I'm thinking we could make it an action item, right, if we have three.
That's correct.
So I want to understand this, this is to change the two-hour limit to six hours?
That's correct.
For those people going to shows in those lots and.
To discuss.
During business hours.
I'll gladly support if it was what Mr. City Attorney said, just an overarching.
Correct, yeah, yeah, we shouldn't drill down to, if there's an, there's just an overall discussion on the parking regulations.
Oh.
In these, in these.
In those lots.
In these lots, we don't need to specify, yeah, yeah.
Great, okay, thank you.
Including employee parking.
Correct, yeah, yeah, that is, that is, that is inclusive.
All right, that's my motion, I have two. You want to jump in there?
Councilmember Detoy, one, two, three.
No.
Yeah.
We specify it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, what's next on our agenda? We're almost finished this evening, well, maybe not.
Item 17C, resolution approving the adoption of the multiple employer OPB Pension 115 Trust administered by Schuster Advisory Group LLC.
Okay, go for it.
So for this item, the good news, it's not about parking, the bad news, it's still me. So we'll talk about our third favorite item, other than short-term rentals, parking, now retiree health benefits, and pension trusts. Next, oh, this, here, just, I'll give you a quick background on what this item is. So what is a Section 115 trust? I'll run this very quickly. It's a special code in the IRS tax code that allows for segregation of assets. Essentially, what we're doing here is, in 2007, the council approved an ordinance to set up a pension trust. What we're doing is covering retiree healthcare benefits post-retirement. So that's the background there. We've been with one vendor, one provider, that's the trust administrator, first since 2007, that's, that was Pars. There are multiple new players in this industry, we did a thorough process and review and decided to move forward with another advisor, Schuster Advisory Group, which is in front of you today, for one main reason, is the reduction of fees. The business model in a nutshell is quite different. The incumbent has multiple layers of fees and advisors to kind of, a bunch of middlemen, more or less, to administer the plan. We reviewed proposals from both groups, and in front of you today are cost-saving projections by shifting our services over to Schuster Advisory Group. This is approximately about a 51% reduction in fees, which compounds over time to nearly to administer the plan. We reviewed proposals from both groups and in front of you today are cost-saving projections by shifting our services over to Schuster Advisory Group. This is approximately about a 51% reduction in fees, which compounds over time to nearly almost $5 million of savings over 30 years, which we think is great when we're growing our nest egg to cover retiree health benefits. So again, why change trust administrators? I kind of buried the, I didn't really bury the lead. It's cost savings, having the flexibility to make changes to our plans as we see fit. Just a quick background, we actually do work with Schuster currently administering our 457, which is our deferred comp plan for our employees, and our 401A, which is essentially a 401K for government employees. So great success, very happy with their fee structure and their investment performance over time. So very comfortable moving forward at this time. Just a quick background of what a trust administrator does. They're a fiduciary. They have no financial incentive to sell or peddle certain investments to us. They must act by law and the best interest of their clients. So this is just a breakdown of the partners we'd be working with, Schuster as the trust administrator, using Charles Schwab and Alta Trust as a direct, direct trustee. The model, to put it plain and simple, is like if you have your own, you know, investment account at home, working directly with a platform. They're cutting around a lot of the middle, the middlemen, the middle people, and to really reduce our fees. So a lot of numbers here, but just the bottom line, those administrative costs were projected to save anywhere the range of $40,000 to $50,000 per year on foregone fees, which again, in previous slideshows, that money really compounds over time. So that's 40K of savings that we can reinvest into this trust to fund our retiree healthcare benefits. And again, these numbers add up very quickly. As mentioned at the top, about a 50% reduction in fees, compounded over time with an average portfolio return anywhere between 5 and 6 or 7%. Over 30 years, you're talking about significant money. So from a cost-saving perspective, it's a no-brainer from staff's level. Reduce fees, increase the balance of this trust, continue to grow with a proven partner is something we want to move forward with. So very quick, just staff recommends to move forward with our OPEB Pension 115 Trust and shift administration over to Schuster Advisory Group. With that, that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on my left, on my right? Okay. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? Madam City Clerk, do we have anyone online?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay. Bring it back to the council for a discussion and motion.
I'll make a motion to staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, could we do a vote? Okay, the results are up on the screen. Madam City Clerk, could you announce the results?
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. And what is our next item?
Seventeen E, city council review of the options under consideration by the Civic Facilities Advisory Group and discussion regarding the possible removal of the option of building a new city hall on the east side of Valley Drive.
Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk or Madam Deputy is up here. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protema, members of the city council. The item that we have for you next this evening was brought back at the direction of city council at its last meeting to review the options under consideration by the Civic Facilities Advisory Group. So as you can see, we included some background here on this item. The city has been having discussions regarding civic facilities dating back to about 2015 and 2016, when prior studies were completed. In 2023, staff picked up this item again, the civic facilities discussion at the direction of city council. And at that time, the direction was to begin with the studies that were already completed in lieu of initiating new studies, so to build upon those. Thank you. And so that's what we started in late 2023. On November 29th, we had a civic facilities study session, building upon those past studies, strategic plans, the ones completed from 2013 to 2017. Bringing us to early 2024, at the time, council was interested in involving the community early on in this new discussion.
I'm sorry, Angela, can you use the handheld? I think online folks struggle with hearing it.
Okay, okay, very good. So in late November 29th, we had the civic facilities. For those online who may have missed that part, we had the civic facility study session. And then going into early 2024, on February 15th, city council at the time, in late 2023, early 2024, was interested in involving the community early on in the civic facilities discussion and requested a plan for community engagement. Based on that council direction, staff did move forward with a request for proposals process to secure a a firm to assist us with a 12 to 18 month comprehensive community outreach and engagement process. And council also provided direction on forming an informal civic facilities advisory group, which at that time, the city did move forward with. Based on council direction, all options were on the table so that we would have the most robust and authentic engagement process with the community. And that's where we are today. So currently, the city manager has formed an informal civic facilities advisory group consisting of 12 members. It was created by the city manager with the concurrence and understanding from a previous council direction that it would not be a Brown Act body as defined by the Brown Act. This group works with their collective knowledge and we were lucky to get a lot of interest with people with specific backgrounds that help us on this project to help refine project options, consider financing alternatives, review community feedback from the larger community discussion, and assist the city manager in forming a recommendation to city council. And just as a reminder, the recommendation would, you know, simply be a recommendation that council could consider and not anything that they would have to adhere to. The Civic Facilities Advisory Group is also very interested in assisting the city and being ambassadors to the community at large. They've already provided that information to us during the meetings that they're very excited and willing to do so. So where we are with the community engagement process right now, the Civic Facilities Advisory Group has met twice. The first time was in November 2024, and we got the group kicked off with their purpose and project background, gave updates of the community progress and outreach efforts to date, and discussed potential future meeting items with them and what they would like to discuss. In January of 2025, we did discuss with the group the project site analysis, renovations versus new builds, construction impacts on each site, long-term opportunities and impacts, zoning and land use, and relative costs. So that was the last meeting that they had. We have projected three additional meetings with the group. Our next, our next planned meeting, tentatively scheduled for February, is to go over best practices and review other local cities' facilities. That's some feedback we've received from the group and also from our attendees at the various tours that we've had to date. The March topic would be funding and financing, looking at grants and one-time funding options, bonds and other financing, and potential sources of revenue. And then in April 2025, really working with this group on how to raise public awareness, getting their ideas, and working to get that started as well. While the Civic Facilities Advisor Group is meeting, we are doing a community at-large engagement plan at the same time. And so we have created a project website. It is civicfacilitiesHB.org. And that is live, and we're keeping that up to date as meetings are happening. We've also worked on social media materials, which we'll be launching. And we have fact sheets and online survey and feedback process where people can submit live feedback through the website. And we're also in the process of hosting community meetings. To date, we've had two tours. In October, we had an open house here at city hall and PD, which was attended by 45 people. We've also had an open house at the city yard in base three in November, and that was well-attended with 50 people. And then on January 22nd, just recently, we had a citywide stakeholder meeting that was attended by 35 individuals. We've also held four pop-up events to get out into the community, meet people at the farmer's market and the concert series and holiday movie night to inform them of the project and make sure that they know how to be engaged in the discussion. We're still working on additional community meetings, planning to go to our boards and commissions with presentations and have additional pop-up events as spring and summer events get started. So with that, I'm sharing this presentation with one of my colleagues, Brandon. So he'll come back up and take it from here.
Thank you, Angela. Just quickly, I'm just going to bookend some of the options we'll review in more depth with Jeff, just to give some financial context. So obviously, with any project, funding constraints and the environment surrounding the project is a strong consideration and could determine which direction we go in. So just wanted to provide counsel, just some high-level financial context before we get into the options. First off, we have about, so currently, we're budgeted for about $28 million in CIP projects for this current year. Jonas Seaman done a fabulous job executing, as you've seen through his continual updates. There's about $11 million of ongoing need for just routine CIP maintenance. That's talking about sidewalks, streets, just keeping, keeping the lights on and keeping our buildings maintained as they are. In any given year, we're looking at about a $5 million shortfall of meeting that $11 million. So the takeaway message is this project is competing with other capital needs moving forward. Currently, as it exists right now, we don't have the cash means to bring on any robust maintenance repair program or even a new facility. So that leads into points two and three, which we'll talk about in a bit. All in all, there's about $135 million. You've probably seen that number before, in unfunded future capital needs. This is a result of many master plans, ADA assessments. So across the board, a long pipeline of unfunded project needs. And lastly, our emergency reserves. So right now, due to council policy, we have a financial policy that we shall strive for 20% operational reserve. So right now, we have $10.6 million in emergency reserves. But to put it in context of my first point, we're running a structural deficit when it comes to funding CIP. So we potentially, over the next few years, could, you know, severely tap into the reserves, just maintaining the current facilities as they exist now. So with that, I'll turn it over. Oops, one more slide. Again, reiteration of before, we're talking about funding sources. So option one, obviously, is looking with our existing CIP budget. Again, the takeaway message being there is very little wiggle room with our existing resources and our competing needs. Cost savings from a new facility. So any new facility or new significant rehab, there are operational savings. So that's a consideration too, is it's like a car, right? You have an old car, you're throwing a lot of money to keep it, keep it working. You buy a new car, you save money in the long run. Obviously, a higher upfront cost, but the long-term savings are obviously there. And lastly, I think we'll hit upon in Jeff's next few slides is the idea of looking at additional resource needs, utilizing city assets, revenue options to help fund this potential project. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jeff to dig into some of the more detailed options.
Thanks, Brandon. You guys. Pleasure to be here tonight. Just, I think what is, we're considering taking a site off the list of options that your, the advisory group is exploring. I just wanted to kind of reframe what, what we talked about with options before. And this slide is really just laying out, like, what are the elements and where are we trying to fit them? Like, we've got a yard, we've got the base three, we've got your EOC, your existing city hall here, the police station. And then also needs for, you know, repairs and upgrades out of the community resource building itself with windows falling out and other things there. Potential to move the library to that site. There's existing funding for that, at least partially. The county has reserve funds for renovation or a new project. And then maybe move the fire station if it makes sense to redevelop that area and public parking. And again, that's just like, okay, well, if those are all the elements, then what sites do they go on? And, you know, we came up with some different options back in '23. And these were just four kind of potential options. These were not like the options or the plan. This was just, you know, ideas. And if you liked some pieces of them, the idea was, you know, as we work through this process with the community and with the community advisory group and with council and with staff, we'll come up with what the plan should be. But these were just to start to lay out and frame and bookend, if you will, some potential ways to think about the project and how to fit those pieces into some of the different sites. So I wanted to kind of recap them tonight as you guys go forward and consider how you'd like the community advisory group to go forward and how you'd like staff to, staff to look at and frame this project. So the first one, which we called option A in 2023, was to put everything on the community resources site. And there were really two primary reasons to do that. Number one, it's a big site and it can fit everything. Number two, this site is owned by the city, but it is deed restricted for public purpose. So for open space, recreation, education, or other community purpose. It was deeded to the city from the school district in 1978, I think. So, you know, this would be a site that couldn't otherwise be redeveloped or couldn't be reproduced for any revenue-producing needs. Now, there's lots of ways to move the pieces around and plant it on the site, but this was just one way that it could potentially lay out fitting a library, police station, city hall with underground parking for city and public. And, you know, when we presented this in '23, it was the most expensive option, but the reason is it had more elements. Again, had the public parking and we're redoing skate parks and we're redoing the tennis courts and other things. So there's, there's more scope in here, right? So just qualitatively, like this, the, one of the reasons to do it, again, is you can redevelop this site here for revenue-producing uses, whether, you know, that's a hotel or retail or residential or other uses, but that gives this as a revenue-producing option to help you pay for the civic center pieces. It creates excess funds potentially for other CIP projects. There's no temporary space required because you can build on a clean site and then move everybody over. But there's, you know, potential heightened massing concerns. There's a lot of stuff to put over there. There is an opportunity to increase the public parking, as we talked about, and to redo the parks and tennis courts. Another option was, we called option B, which is to look at the self-storage lot. Now, this could be used for a few things, but could fit all of your need for city hall, police, even a library with some underground parking. It's a tight site. It would be a little challenging to work on, but you could push everything there. Again, that is to allow for some redevelopment of the civic center site. It would require some temporary space, but it is an option. And again, these are not all mutually exclusive. We can do some, some of each, which is kind of what option C was. Okay, well, let's just look at doing public parking and some city parking needs, as well as a library over on the community resources building site. And then can we get city hall and police on this site, either in some form of a new building or renovation? This show is all new. It might be more cost-effective to use some of the existing facilities, but some plan that would look like this would be, you know, a portion of both. That would allow, again, for some temporary space that would still be required. But you could increase the public parking. You could still redo the parks, skate park and the tennis courts. And you can redevelop, then the self-storage site is still left alone and can generate revenue in its existing condition or be redeveloped for higher and better uses to generate some revenue. And then the last one we looked at was just trying to do the most kind of down and dirty renovation and expansion we could, which is option D. And that's, you know, how do we work within the site constraints that we have here? Just basically expand out the back with an annex for the police station and city hall. If you want to not use the self-storage lot as well, you would then need to do some underground parking to be able to park city staff and the police needs. So that would add to the project cost for this renovation option, but allow that site to be either used for revenue generating uses as a self-storage lot or something else. Again, these were just options that sort of laid out some, some parameters, some bookends. We can mix and match and we can do lots of things. But we just wanted to refresh as you guys go forward and deliberate and think about, do all of these sites want to continue to be in play for the advisory group and for this work project?
Thank you.
So lastly, I'll just wrap up. I think my initial slide was just to lay the framework that there are competing CIP needs that this project can't essentially be funded on an ongoing structural basis, on a piecemeal fashion. And I think the big takeaway is that last point here with Jeff's, Jeff's options is keeping all options on the table, right? I think that when Angela presented in the very beginning, this has been a discussion from multiple councils over multiple years of the need for rehabilitation, rehab, reconstruction of this, of the civic center facilities. And knowing that we have future budget constraints is keeping all options on the table. I think that's the takeaway message that at least I'm bringing to the table is I think that's the takeaway message that at least I'm bringing to the table, is we have existing assets, good pieces of land, existing assets that we can use to potentially leverage to help fund this project. So I'll conclude with that, is CIP needs growing, unfunded needs growing, the idea that we're looking for creative outside-the-box scenarios to be able to fund something in a sound way that ideally has a budget-neutral impact, at best is a cost-decreative, you know, revenue generator for the city. So with that, that concludes our presentation and open to any questions from council or the public.
Thank you very much. So regarding the A, B, C, D, and those were consistent with my notes I had from '23 on this, the proposal is to possibly consider eliminating option A, as I understand. Is that pretty much where we're at on this?
And so, Mr. Mayor, if I may, maybe an issue of semantics, but I just want to be clear. So the advisory committee is just that, formed by Madam City Manager, to ensure we don't get into Brown Act issues. You guys can't necessarily formally direct them, but if the will of the council is to take a position that option A is not something you're interested in, that is entirely free for you guys to do. So once again, maybe semantics, but I want to be sure that this is not a, you guys cannot direct the advisory committee, you must not talk about A, B, or C. You guys can say, we are not interested in A, and I assume the advisory committee and the city as a whole would take that into consideration.
You're saying that this evening, we should not discuss the different options?
No, of course not, no, no. I want you guys to discuss the options. I just want to make sure that the motion is not, direct the advisory committee to do A, B, and C.
Okay.
It is instead, the position of this body is that option whatever, we're not interested in.
We're not there yet, right now, we're just asking questions, but thank you. And there were some numbers thrown out, and I don't know if it was during private meetings or when the different options were. And my old notes show that option A is from 60 to 108 million, option B is 63 to 87 million, C with the library up there is 70 to 95, and renovation is 60 to 80 million. Now, I'm sure those are just rough numbers that were thrown out there, but is that still generally the estimate of what would be, is it too premature to?
I would suggest it's too premature.
Yeah.
I think what Jeff was saying, these are concepts, and you'll notice, any of the concepts, they're essentially Lego pieces. You're talking about moving property, building parking, looking for different tenants, looking for redevelopment opportunities. I think, yeah, I wouldn't take those four options as set as stone and definitely not stick to those. And there's a wide range for a reason.
Oh, yeah. So you're probably going to come up with a bunch of different ones that are more than just four, right? Like 10, 12?
If that's what comes out of the advisory committee?
And you're looking at advantages and disadvantages of each one, I assume it's going to be something like that.
And just a caveat, too, a lot of the stuff, by taking things off the table, that could limit potential revenue opportunities, right? So if the council or advisory committee says, you shall not develop at all on, you know, the building across the street, you know, that does limit the flexibility of what our revenue options moving forward, whether it be parking, hotel development, whatever it is. So just want to make that clarification.
Okay, sure. And then the current timeline we're on is to come back to us on, what month would that be? Month number 18 is when? What?
It's June. Next year. This time. Before that date, yeah.
Eighteen, number 18 month is the end of '25?
Hey, Mr., could you?
I thought it was more like early '26 sometime.
Right, yeah, the 12 months.
So I think Mayor is talking about the larger engagement process, where council said between 12 and 18 months.
Correct, yeah, okay. Sorry, I misunderstood, yes.
So the designated expected time that it would come to us would be on the 18th month, correct?
Thereabouts.
And which comes up to when in what year?
That would be in '26.
Like about?
No, end of this year, '25, sorry, we're in '25.
I'm sorry, the 18th month is the end of '25?
Around the end of '25.
So we're sixth month into it. We're six months into the process.
December of 2025.
Mark Claire, we're six months.
We're six months into the process already?
The community engagement process.
Well, then it would be 12 months from this month, you're right.
Correct.
Which is January of '26.
And she said December.
Six.
It doesn't, it won't be precise.
Yeah, no, I know that, but I'm trying to get, there's a big difference between January, early next year and this coming year, so.
Correct, and we have a range of 12 to 18 months, right? So that's a little bit of vagueness here. So 12 months will take us to November of this year.
Okay.
18 months would take us to midway through next year. So that's the timeline that we're working on.
Beautiful. And I'm just wondering, if you came up with 15 different options, would it make sense to come to us first and try to narrow it down a little bit, or is it best to just keep it open until then?
I think at the moment, what we create from council is direction on what the goals are. I think that's really where we are at with the group, and that's what we've talked about, is a goal to look at things that are, you know, the lowest-cost project that you can do, or is it a goal to look at a larger project that can be part of an economic development story and create general fund revenues for this and other projects, you know? Or is it, you know, what are the parameters that council would like to see the group consider in terms of really what the project goals are? I think that would be very helpful at this point. And, you know, then we can define options. I don't know that we would come back with 15 options, I feel like that's going to be a lot for people to digest. We'd like to narrow it down to two or three options. Even the four or five start to get a little anxious.
Right, okay. And you did have a meeting just recently in January where the community was invited and you were there, I guess. I wasn't aware, I don't know how many people attended, whether it was a lot of outreach to the community to bring them in, or what the attendance was at that.
Yes, I mean, that was, again, part of the community outreach, we're doing the community advisory group in parallel with larger group meetings and trying to get feedback from everybody to see what the community's appetite is for some of these larger questions. So the meeting that we had last Tuesday did talk about some of the site options and, you know, how we can fit some of the pieces that we have into the box, you know, revenue generation or, you know, and cost control, and how do you balance those two things together.
Great. And what was the, about how many people attended that?
It was about 26 people, I think, in the room, yeah.
Okay. But there was some outreach to the community to invite them and bring them in.
Absolutely.
And this is how the people on the facilities group are acting as ambassadors to reach out to the community and get them to come?
They are, and there was also direct advertising on your website and newsletter channels.
Thank you very much.
I have a question. Yes? Jeff? Just a moment ago, you were talking about goals. What are our goals and how did you put it? One was the lowest cost point, the other one was a community something? Can you repeat that?
When I think about, I think when I think about facilities, I think about three things. Number one, what is the lowest first cost? What's the cheapest thing I can get? And then I also think about, what's the total long-term operating cost? So if I take that first cost to what it cost me to build it, what's it then cost me to finance it and operate it? So what's my payment over time? And then maybe the most important thing is, well, how do I fund it? How do I match that payment with the revenue that I got to bring in? And is there a revenue generation piece to it, right? So.
But you said specifically that, what were your goals? You want to do the lowest cost point, the cheapest thing you can do? Or the other one was a community something that?
Or the large, again, I think part of the debate here that I think has been going on, you know, amongst council, certainly has been going on in the working groups, I feel like a little bit of this is going on in the press and the community, is, you know, how big is this project and what is this project? It's a bigger project if you move these facilities to use this site as a revenue-generating opportunity. And I think that's just one, like, if the council is looking to preempt the discussion, that's a fundamental piece of it. You know, do you want to redevelop this site? If the answer is no, that is direction, and that will, you know, certainly limit the options, but it will also limit the ability to find funds to pay for the future project. So, you know, that's.
And Mayor Protem, if I might, I think you were also asking about one aspect that Jeff had mentioned that is worth restating. So council has heard throughout the process previously, through the study session, review of the facilities needs assessment, that there are needs to the building, needs to operations, what are the ongoing maintenance costs? You've heard that. So when we come to council, it would be helpful to hear what council now views, or maybe in the next few months, views as the goals. With your understanding of what the facility needs assessment has provided, with your understanding of the staffing and the operations and what we're trying to achieve, your understanding of community goals, would the council be interested in simply making changes sufficient to meet operational goals? Would the council be interested in treating this public effort, this project, whatever it looks like, as an economic development engine for Upper Pier, as an opportunity to provide parking perhaps? There are multiple goals that you can identify based on your knowledge of the community, your knowledge of how the city attempts to deliver services, and your knowledge of how we are working efficiently or not efficiently, based on the different presentations. And so if you can channel those into guidelines or guiding principles, instead of focusing on what these options cost and then try and back into that, you have larger goals because you are representative of the community. And so you can share that, and I think that would be valuable to share so that we can have that in mind. You know, you may, you've heard from different community members, businesses, that perhaps Upper Pier is not experiencing the economic vitality that they would like. And a lot of times, that's achieved through spurring development. And a city can be that engine. So that's a goal. The other goal is, look at our basic needs. If we need, you know, 10,000 or 20,000 additional square feet, or if the police department is absolutely the priority, then let us know that that's what it is. But that's what we mean by sharing with us what the goals are. And then also understanding that each option comes with it trade-offs. The trade-off could be that you lose a revenue-generating opportunity, the trade-off, and so for that, that means that the bond cost is higher. But to start off with your goals, I think, would be helpful.
Any more questions, Mr. Fratton?
I have from Jeff. Thank you very much for that, I appreciate it. So Jeff, you're the consultant that we hired to present the different options and so on and so forth, correct?
Yes.
And you have your own company, you're Fullerton Consultants, okay. So we have a contract, I guess, with Lee Andrews Group to do the public outreach?
Yes.
We're six months into the public outreach? I think that was stated a few minutes ago, that we're already six months into that?
Mm-hmm.
The other night at the community meeting that we had, you were pretty much running the show. Why wasn't Lee Andrews Group doing that? And why isn't Lee Andrews Group working with the community citizens group and so on? And I don't understand why our public outreach is already six months into the business and we're going to be done in another 12 months. Haven't seen Lee Andrews Group anywhere yet. Aren't they going to do our public outreach?
They're doing a lot of the work. They're producing the website, they're producing the events, the materials, they've, you know, put together all the videos that are showing up on our website in terms of to help people who couldn't come to those site tours. That's the work that they were contracted to do. I was speaking at the outreach event because, as you mentioned, I put together the options and it seemed like I would have the knowledge to be able to explain that to the community. But they are doing a lot of, all the legwork to get us there.
And when we came to council with the community outreach plan, we indicated that Jeff would serve as the subject matter expert to these groups. But the six months included, just as Jeff said, the production of the videos, the social media messaging, and then also to conduct the tours. So there were three tours, I believe, that were scheduled. And so that is what took place in the last six months. And the very first large group general meeting was just last week. And we had 60-plus, 60 or so RSVPs, and actually 35 people showed up, and I'm not sure if we're including staff in the 35, but 35 people were in the room.
Okay, well, a population of 20-some thousand people at 35 isn't such a great turnout. So maybe the public engagement hasn't been too successful yet in six months. Because as I see this, it's, we're just kind of spinning our wheels with this, and the public isn't even, they probably don't even know what the hell's going on yet. Most of those people, most of those 22,000 people haven't a clue that we're even talking about this. So that's what needs to happen. We need to get those people involved in this. But we're moving off the subject here of the questions. And so, no, I don't have any more questions, thank you.
Counsel member Detoy.
Thank you. How much revenue does public storage provide to the city annually?
It's about $270,000 in lease revenue a year.
Perfect, thank you.
Anyone on my right? Okay, thank you very much. Anyone wishing to? Oh, I had one more question. In 2016, there was a study, the facilities plan study that was conducted, and I believe that study recommended that if we renovated city hall, it would be, serve its useful purpose for another 50 years. Are you familiar with that 2016 study?
Yes, that was, the study was done by Mary McGrath and Associates. I believe they had several options. At the time, you were considering a fire station, so the renovation of the city hall and it was included an expansion of fire station and police as well. I think they were looking for about 95,000 square feet total, and they had a number of different configurations.
Right, okay. But you are familiar with the plan and utilizing it, and you're able to draw from that?
Yes, absolutely. And part of option D was based on some of the thoughts that they had there as well. Of course, you've done what you need to do with the fire station.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone from the audience wishing to come down and speak on this issue? Good evening.
No, it's good morning. I wasn't going to say anything, but you've raised this subject of outreach. And I was at the meeting. There were 21 people in the room, if you discount staff, and I think either three or four of them were on the civic facilities steering groups. That's like net 17 that we've picked up through the outreach program. And there were four questions on the night about outreach. And I did feel sorry for you, Jeff, that you had to field those questions because there were two people from Lee Andrews Group in the room. You gotta get these guys to step up. I looked at the program with Lee Andrews, and I actually spoke to the senior person who's named in the contract. The Lee Andrews contract is very backloaded. It's, there's a lot of stuff that's supposed to happen in the fourth quarter after all the work is done and the options are developed. But I really think the project is in danger of just being kind of dead on arrival. It's got no momentum in the community, and actually, none of the options, as we said on the night, have anything really substantive in it for the residents. So it's a really hard sell, the way it's been packaged and the way it's been sold so far. I'll repeat what I said at the meeting. The hotel option badly framed, and it hasn't gone down well. So now you're left with this sort of administrative shuffle of buildings. It's not a particularly exciting option for residents. So I think you could conclude from where we are today. Either there's no interest in the project in the community, or we just haven't quite hit the button in terms of firing people's imagination and getting them to want to come and take part. It's one of those two things. But that contract's $121,000 in the first phase with a $58,000 option, $179,000. I think they need to step up, and you might want to have a look at that contract and think about whether you bring some of that work forward or you just scale their work back. Because their work at the moment isn't getting people very excited. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the audience? Okay, Madam City Clerk, do we have any people online?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the audience? Okay. Madam City Clerk, do we have any people online? Thank you very much, by the way, for sticking around till 12:30 in the morning. It's great to see public participation.
We have three virtual hands raised. First hand is Anthony Higgins. Anthony, your three minutes will begin once you start speaking.
Hello. A few things. I think that the project got off on a bad foot by focusing on really a large hotel that nobody really wants and a showcase City Hall versus a Spartan functional City Hall. I mean, when you start out with this luxury view, you know, this grandiose hotel and a showcase City Hall, then I'll give you an example that Carrie Ty said would be something that people would want to come and see and move to Hermosa Beach over, that was just disconnected from the reality of most people. Now, the engagement process itself is certainly not stimulating. And I think what people are really worried about when they start trying to cut off one option or another at this stage, and I think that would be a shame, but they're worried that we're going to be led by the nose into a showcase City Hall and a big hotel. We're going to be led by the nose. And people are still stinging from the sales tax, presentations, and stuff that basically was, we were told was educational, and everybody in the world could tell that it was promotional. And so the issue becomes, do we trust, do the residents trust the city to really not lead us by the nose and give us an objective analysis of these options? And I think that that is a big problem for this project. And the way it stands now, unless you can address those trust issues, you're never going to get funding for this, you'll never get funding for a sales tax. Something has to be done. And we don't need a big hotel, most people think, and we don't need a showcase City Hall. We need a lean, mean, functional City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who we have next?
We have Scott Hayes. Scott Hayes, your three minutes will start once you begin speaking.
Good morning. I missed the deadline, but I want to make sure my, I got on public comment. So to me, I'm going to address primarily what this issue was brought up on the agenda, and that is whether or not some options should be removed from consideration. And I respectfully request that you let the Civic Facilities Advisory Group explore all potential options. At this stage, we're just in the exploration stage, gathering information, considering possibilities. And the cost to investigate these different options is extremely low now, as opposed to later changing our minds once things get more developed. You know, the advisory group was put together to provide options to the council. Council can always reject those choices later. Even if you've got a preconceived notion now that an option at the community center is a terrible idea, well, maybe the advisory group comes up with something that you weren't thinking of, and you say, well, you know what, maybe that'll work. Maybe that's a way we can do, get this project done. And I think shutting that down at this stage is just absolutely premature, and I strongly urge you to let the advisory group do its work, come up with as many options as possible, and come up with some good viable options for the project. I would like to hear, I heard a lot of people at the meeting last week, there was a lot of grousing about a lot of stuff. I didn't hear a lot of people making a lot of suggestions. So I'm very open to hearing any suggestions that council might have for the advisory group and for Jeff Fullerton's group. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you very much. And we have one more online?
Yes. Laura Peña, your three minutes will start once you begin speaking.
Good morning. It's crucial that, as the prior speaker said, that we refocus our efforts on messaging to ensure we want to have a best outcome. But let's first address the elephant in the room. This community engagement, I cannot tell you, needs to get addressed. This is the paramount thing that we need to discuss. Despite the city efforts not having attracted the level of participation we need to truly make an informed decision is crucial. I saw the same people that I saw on the city tour that I went on. And so I keep on seeing the same people. If we want to hear diverse voices, ideas, and feedback, maybe these ambassadors should go to the farmer's market on Friday before the Tuesday meeting to let people know, you know, to get different groups of people. And I've heard on council, you speak on a variety of projects, and the one that comes close to my mind is Parking Lot D. After many years of meetings, a critical question was posed. What is the best and highest use for the site? Why aren't we asking ourselves the same question on the sites involved in a $100 million project as we did the parking lot? We should be doing more diligence, making sure we're asking the right questions to lead this discussion, to address the needs of our community. It's not just about the city staff. For example, with the library, we have 4.6 million that has been allocated from the county to renovate. This can be moved to the community center. In theory, we have had discussions on economic development. Where are our placemaking strategies? This could be a great opportunity. We could really be stimulating exciting conversations that could draw the public in to engage. We have our Park Master Plan. Where is the overlap for that and the opportunities that serve our community? We had multiple workshops that stimulated engagement because it wasn't a lecture-based, it was an interactive. I bring up these plans because we have had active engagement. So this whole project needs to be reevaluated in regards to the messaging, to meeting the community where they're at, what their concerns are, and what our needs are. And I think dealing with our long-term financial, you know, financial implications of this project is huge. But like was mentioned in the meeting, let's talk about the future of work. If you would have asked me 14 years ago if I would have been meeting with people around the country on a virtual Zoom meeting, I could not have imagined it. So if we don't start talking about what the future of work, Flex Space looks like it's a missing component. There are many more questions we need to ask. So please, don't prematurely limit the potential or the vision. Let's take a pause, reset the discussion to ensure we are prioritizing flexibility and adaptability in our civic facilities that can meet the future, not just replicate the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else online?
I do not see any hand raised.
Okay. Great. Bringing it back to the council for deliberations. Try to make this as quick as we can. The hotel op, well, I understand the frustration that members of the team have or members of the community that think it isn't good to exclude options, and it's better to look at goals and all that. But I think that that option of the City Hall east of Al Yarmore presents so many things that doesn't represent what Hermosa Beach is. Building a new City Hall, and when people talk about the hotel, that's what we're talking about, turning this City Hall into a hotel to have to pay for something like that and that public partner privacy. And I don't know. I guess from my feeling, from my standpoint, Hermosa Beach doesn't need to do that in order to address our facilities. And you're right, it's somehow disruptive to eliminate that option out of it, but by keeping that option in there, it just sends the wrong message that, yeah, we need to build a Met Lock, or we need to build something really big and grandiose and turn this into a big, big city because that's what we need. And it's difficult, but that's why, that's part of the reason I support keeping that option out. I think it sends a message that this existing City Hall is a great place. It's beautiful, built in the '60s. Studies have shown it can last at least another 50 years, if not more. The inside can be gutted, and it's user-friendly. And it sends a message to this community that, you know, we try to renovate things instead of bulldozing things down and building everything. And so that's the standpoint I'm coming from on this, and happy to hear from my colleagues who would ever like to go next. Counselmember Detoy?
Thank you, Alden. To the contrasting view, where I think, just listening to the public commenters, I think, you know, one of them said, explore all options, community engagement, best and highest use, more diligence. At this stage in the game, I think eliminating options is silly, especially you see our financial situation. We need to do something. We have aging infrastructure, and how do we not have it hit the general fund is very important. You know, we get several hundred thousand dollars a year for the storage facility. Sure, we can move everything over there, but now we have no revenue, so now we're paying out of pocket for new structure, and then we're not getting the revenue back to pay for it. So, I mean, that seems like a very silly idea to me. But again, that isn't our decision. The makeup of the stakeholder group, there are not 12 minds that are alike. I was very impressed at the makeup, and there's some people that, you know, just as you said, want to keep Hermosa the way it is, and there's some, you know, different views of people that really want to sink their teeth into this information and what is the best for the city in the long run, not just physical structures but financially. And I think that's the number one thing we have to look at, is what can we do that does not hit our general fund fully and, you know, minimize the impact of that so we can keep repaving our roads, so we can keep, you know, if we have to rebuild a pier, whatever the CIP is, invest in our parks. And all of that is so important because we have to keep maintaining our city infrastructure while we do whatever, ultimately what we decide, but the stakeholder groups are going to advise, the commissions are going to advise. And I think just eliminating options this early in the game is ill-advised. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone next? Mayor Protem.
I guess we're going in order, from left to right. So one caller a little while ago mentioned being led by the nose to the option of building the big Hauser Gaza on the other side of the street. And I don't know if I'd put it that way, but to be quite honest with you, I believe that from the very beginning, the presentation of the four options has been skewed toward that option and the hotel to pay for it. In every little turn, for instance, this evening, Brandon was talking about, what should we do? Should we, it's like having an old car that doesn't run very good and spending a bunch of money to keep it going, and it's going to die eventually anyway, and wouldn't it be smarter to go buy a new car? That's kind of insulting when you compare this building to an old car that's going to die anyway. And then the other option is to buy the brand-new car that's on the other side of the hill. Honestly, it's not that simple. It's not that clear. That's, that is, in a way, comparing things in such a way that it makes one thing look really horrible and the other thing look like, oh, that's the greatest thing that's ever going to happen. And I don't believe that, that those are the true conditions of what we have going here. Nothing personal, Brandon. Jeff, a little while ago, you said, what do we want to do? What are our goals? And you said, the lowest, cheapest thing we can do? Or do we want to create a community revenue generating thing? Again, a comparison of the cheapest thing we can do or this magnificent thing we can do? That's subtle. Well, maybe it's not too subtle, honestly. The other night at the community meeting, it was the same kind of thing. There were the four options up there, and there was this, that, and the other thing. None of them really reflected one possibility of using the storage facility to build there and then renovate this also. We could meet our goals. And, you know, it's never been discussed. It's just like we could skip over those things and go right to, well, we can do this, the cheapest thing, or we can do the great thing. And it's just not that way. And I don't believe it's that way. And I don't believe most people in town that are even aware of this project believe it's that way. As to community engagement, and I'm not sure why we have hundreds of thousands of dollars to pay into a group that apparently isn't really doing anything, because we had 20-some, 30, you know, let's give it the benefit of the doubt, 35 people show up for a meeting about a very important thing. That's not good community engagement, especially since we're six months, one-third of the way into our 18-month in community engagement. They're not doing their job. We're not getting our money's worth out of Lee Andrews Group. When we did Plan Hermosa, we spent months and months with meetings. We had the Clark Building then, which is great, maybe we could do something in some other area. But they had these tables set up with big pictures of Hermosa Beach, and how would you like this section, and the names of each things, and I'd lived here 50 years and didn't realize that this was, we always called this the sand section, and this is the Greenwich Village and so on, where Critters is. All of that information was laid out there. There were things to fill out, and every Saturday, people came by and you get a little clipboard with a thing, and you walk from table to table, and people were talking and discussing, oh, look at this, is where our house is. And they were enjoying it, and they were into it. And all of that data was compiled together, and hundreds of people, maybe thousands of people in Hermosa Beach participated in that engagement. That's public engagement. And we're not doing that. We're not doing any of that. All we're doing is going over the same four things again. And this one is cheap and crummy, and this one is, well, it's a little better, and then this one is the greatest thing we could ever do. I don't appreciate that. I said that from the very beginning, and I'm saying it again now. I think that, and the idea of pausing this group or eliminating this group, or eliminating that possibility of doing the community center, you know, I don't really want to eliminate anything, but what I want to do is, it seems to me that none of us, I have 50 years of construction experience, and I have a pretty good eye for things, and I can't figure out what the hell A, B, and C and D are. Because there's really just this little 200-mile-up photograph of it, and you go, well, this could be the police department, and this could be this. And that's it. How can anybody make an informed decision based on those four little pictures? We saw them again this evening. It's not, I don't think that's how we should do it. At the very beginning, I was against this idea of this, I love the group idea, but I really questioned the makeup of the group, and what are their qualifications, and why them? Why are they doing this? And what have we done with that group so far? Well, we all went through the facilities here and looked at this and that and the other thing, and it was the same thing. This wiring is bad, and this is horrible, and there's a leak in the thing. Well, we're going to need this building for 10 years, even if we built the new facility on the other side of the Green Belt. We're going to need this place for five to 10 years. While those plans are being made and the facilities, the drawings, and the approvals and so on, at least that long. Why don't we get started on fixing the problems that are wrong with this building, the deferred maintenance? And we keep referring to it as, well, there's deferred maintenance, you know. Well, okay, I don't know who deferred it, but let's stop deferring it. Let's fix it. Let's move on with it. Where do we get the money? I don't know. Find it someplace. Let's cancel some other, we had, what, 60-some CIPs, some of which are never going to happen. Why don't we work on those? Figure, let's push those back a little bit and have a new CIP that goes right to the top of the list. Fix the facilities. Stop the bleeding. Let's get it fixed. That's going, it should happen anyway, no matter what. That's going to, should happen anyway, no matter what happens. So, what I think we should do is pause, stop, go back, get some greater in-depth information about all of those four facility, all those four ideas. There's really only two. Do something here or do something there. So, let's define that a little clearer and let's get some real honest estimates. Not just that, well, this other time we did this, it cost this much, so it's probably going to be that number. We can get some estimates from, from people. I, I don't think we should put it out to bid or get any contractors involved or any of that business. But somehow or another, there should be a way that we can get a better defined picture of what those options are. And, and then get a real honest cost involved. Now we can have a facilities group that's, that has something to, to work with. Okay? How can anybody make an informed decision looking at those four cartoons? I'm sorry, it's just, it, it doesn't sit right with me. So, that's how I feel about this. I think that, I think we should have a little more honesty in the presentation to the public. I think we, we need to have a much more engagement with the public. We need to get, start spending that money properly and get people involved in this. We should, I don't know what we need to do. Farmer's Market wasn't a bad idea. At least get started over there. Mass emails to everybody in the city. Somehow or another, we need to wake everybody up and say, look, we're talking about doing something really huge here. Do we want to just really dive into this or do we not want to dive into this? And then finally, the, we've, we, with these options that we have been presented with, again, in a fairly skewed manner, the only way to pay for it all is a hotel. So that's got to go over there. We got to put a hotel here. And otherwise, it's just, it's just a hundred million dollars and it's just going to be so expensive. We will never pay for it without a hotel or some other form of partnership. Okay, maybe. Maybe we should put the hotel down on parking lot A, where it belongs, by the water. And the hotel and a huge parking structure and retail around the bottom of it. And make that a Metlocks type development. That would pay for this, no matter what we did. There's some money over there. So, that's just an option, but I have never heard anybody even say that out loud yet. Maybe we should put the hotel up by the community center. Big parking structure and a hotel next to our theater and all of that. And renovate that building also to, within the limits of what we can do to a historic building. And, and let that pay for it. Maybe not a huge hotel, but a good hotel up there. Because then the traffic on 4th of July weekend, when that hotel is full of people, won't be driving up and down one lane Pier Avenue and one lane Valley Drive and one lane Ardmore and so on. They'll be coming in and out of Pacific Coast Highway and it'll be up there. And then they're going to go, hey, let's go down and have lunch and walk to Upper Pier Avenue and visit those businesses. That's economic revitalization. But nobody's even mentioned that. So, our community engagement group, if they're working on possibilities and putting things together and all of that, I don't know. I don't know what they've done so far. They've had a couple of meetings and it seems like all they really do is look at those same four drawings all over again and just talk about it. I don't know who they are, most of them. I'm not sure why, what, what criteria they were chosen on. And so, my idea is to pause that group. Maybe not disassemble it, maybe not completely forget that. Maybe not completely forget one option of the four, as it has been suggested. But we need to stop and go backwards a little bit. And we, right now, the cart's before the horse. Let's put the horse in the front. Let's get some decent kind of estimated drawings, something to work with, something to engage the public with. Because right now, we're not doing that. We're not doing it all. That's my piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Back to the, the agenda tonight, what's on the agenda is whether to formally take a position in opposition to the option to build a new city hall on the east side of Valley Drive. So, any other?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Would it be okay to address some of the concerns that Mayor Protem raised? They're valid concerns and perhaps if I can just share some perspective, not to...
Well, I'll tell you, to be quite frank, Madam City Manager, the five of us need to deliberate this. If any member of the body here would like to ask you specific questions, I think that would be great. But, you know, I, I think it's best that we deliberate now and utilize you as staff to answer questions, that would be fine. So, if you don't mind, I think that's the best way to proceed. Thank you. So, any councilmembers have any, any comments?
I'm certainly interested in Madam City Manager's perspective based on councilmember or Mayor Protem Sammons' comments. But I'm also prepared to make some comments based on your statement. We had a caller who talked about an economic driver. And, and this is an opportunity, I think, for us to think in terms of possibilities. I mean, to, to say that our facilities are beautiful is, is the most ridiculous thing I think I've heard since I've been on council. There's nothing beautiful about our facilities. There's nothing that invokes civic pride. Our facilities are a dump. They are failed. They have failed and they are failing, plain and simple. So the question is, what do we do? What is the best and highest use? What do we do and how do we pay for it? And I think what's, what's getting lost in this conversation is, is what we heard from Jeff. We're talking about concepts right now. We don't have four possible courses of action, those only four. We're looking at concepts. We're looking, it could be a piece of this and a piece of that and a piece of this and a piece of that. You know, that's going to be the, the economic driver that's going to help with the vibrancy of our city if we can do some of the things that you talked about in terms of building up there and generating the foot traffic that heads west down Pier. You know, we have the citizen advisor group for a reason. To listen, learn, explore possibilities for addressing our aging and inadequate city, public facilities. Maybe there's a messaging problem and that's something we can certainly discuss. Part of the challenge is, as with most things that go in this city, most people just don't know and don't care, quite frankly. Again, we're looking at concepts right now. This group should be empowered to do its job without unnecessary restrictions, with full transparency and meaningful public participation. And if we need to work on that meaningful public participation piece, let's do that. I don't think we should try to stifle any discussions. We should want to hear diverse perspectives, given our commitment to transparency and community input. We appear to be sending mixed messages now. You know, we're transparent, we want to hear from you, but yet we're going to cut off a part of the conversation because we don't want to hear from you because I'm already predisposed. So, I think we let the advisor group go forward. I think we should work on our messaging and, you know, we're certainly open to better ideas of how we can increase public transportation, uh, public participation. I think that's important. But, you know, let's sally forth and, you know, again, we, as the ultimate decision makers, will have, we can choose what we think is in the best interest of the city at the appropriate time, as opposed to neutering the discussion right now.
Thank you. I, I appreciate both sides of this argument. I'm not sure I agree with the characterization that there's people out there that don't know and don't care. I think there's a lot of people in this community that really care what happens. And, you know, I'm hoping that whatever comes out tonight is the best for everyone. Councilman Keegan, you haven't said anything.
Nothing? The three of us placed this on the agenda. Should I make a motion? All right, I'll, I'll make, I'll make the motion to formally take a position in opposition to the option to build a new city hall on the east side of Valley Drive.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Oh, sure.
What does that mean? We build nothing east of Valley? We touch nothing east of Valley? What does that mean?
It means that we are excluding the option of building a new city hall on the east side of Valley.
So we could build anything else?
Well, they can consider other things, sure. There could be other considerations. You've got library, you've got 4.6 million for the library. It'll cost more to build it, but 4.6 can be used to renovate ours. Yeah, they can go through all those different options. So it's specifically geared towards taking a position to oppose the option to build a new city hall east side of Valley Drive. Which would mean that it would be some combination of renovating what we have here.
But anything else could be built?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
City Hall could conceivably move next door to the storage lot.
Something, yeah, anything.
So, okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. And do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
For discussion.
All right, for discussion. Oh, you've got more discussion. Go ahead. You've been silent there.
Well, I just said, I, I just think that there's too many moving parts to, you know, you've got, you're, you're taking every piece of real estate we have and not saying every piece can be moved around. I think that's a lot to send to a group that's not an experienced builder or developer. I mean, you have a lot of people who lack the expertise to come back with something. I think limiting it a little will give them better focus and it will make it easier for them to make recommendations. So, I'm all for streamlining. I think it's going to get bogged down with too many choices and this will help streamline the process to get some recommendations.
Okay, great. I agree with that.
Just for education, Madam City Manager, could you run down the group? And I'm sure there's a few gentlemen on there that have long histories with the city that have construction experience.
Just give me one minute.
I have it up too, if that's easier.
I got a list in front of me. It looks like there's a few. Few with construction experience.
Yes, there are.
Few engineers.
There are engineers, there are folks with background in development, attorneys, one attorney. But I'll pull up the list. I didn't have it in front of me.
Former city manager, Tom Backley.
Yes.
Mike Flaherty, Scott Hayes, that's what he does day to day. Rick Coning.
Mike Flaherty.
I mean, Mike's not a developer.
No.
Those are all good people in there. What about the other?
There's other stakeholders. Eric, who spoke earlier, Jim Rosenberg.
And Mayor Protem, you were, you were physically present at one of the meetings. That is the group.
Yep. Yeah, you know, I, I mean, I...
I, I wasn't trying to disparage the group by any means.
I'm not either, to be honest with you.
They're, they're good. They're great people and I think they can come up with great recommendations. I think limiting it a little bit will get us to focus and maybe we can be done in less than 18 months. Anyway, any other discussion, anyone?
Yes. I supported this to begin with because I've already said everything I think I need to say about why I supported this. Completely eliminating the idea of building anything up there, I think, is, is a mistake.
That's not the motion.
Yeah, the motion was just to...
I, I understand that. But I think this motion should have some other elements to it. And I would like to either add a friendly amendment or substitute motion. That we, that we pause with the community engagement business and, and actually, I think we should double our efforts on the community engagement issue along with this motion. Instead of just saying, we're not, let's not build anything over there. Let's not build the hotel, the city hall over there. Let's just concentrate on fixing this one and that's all we're going to do. I think we need, there's, there's more to this that we're not doing. And I think that engagement is important, that we get the city involved in this and talk about it. And that group, I was at a meeting and I watched and they pretty much got the same presentation that we've been getting and really, there was no growth there. I didn't see anybody really diving in with some new ideas. I'd love to see new ideas out of the group. But those people you mentioned and the other people that you didn't mention altogether, and I'm not disparaging anybody there, I think. But it just seems to me that that isn't happening. It's just, it's stagnant. The whole process is stagnant. We're, we're talking about this, we're talking about that and there's just, there isn't anything really that's specific. And yet, there's a whole lot of information that, and it's all just all over the place. So, somehow or another, we need to focus our efforts on the discussion about the plan and what to build where and so on. And open our minds up to the idea of maybe putting a hotel somewhere else and, or moving the library or parking lot, D is, I don't know, whatever, something. Let's, let's talk about different ideas instead of just this or this. That's what I would like to see in this motion. I don't know how we do that.
Yeah, I mean, I...
How do we?
I'm, I'm willing to work with you with a friendly amendment, but I think those things can happen without a friendly amendment. But if you want a friendly amendment to engage our consultants quicker, to get the community engaged and, and get moving a little bit faster, that, would, would that be an amendment you'd consider?
Yeah, to refocus, refocus our public engagement?
Yeah, refocus public engagement?
Yes.
Sure.
In addition to eliminating that, I, the hotel.
Sure. The seconder agrees to that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and so, hang on, I just want to be a bit clear because the, the, the first portion, understand that.
By the way, is there someone's phone that keeps ringing? It's not mine.
I was hearing that vibration too, but maybe I thought I was just going in.
Oh, it's my...
Oh, okay, there we go. Go ahead.
And so obviously, the, you cannot direct the, the advisory board, but you guys can, of course, take a position, be in opposition, so that, that's that. The, the, the motion to, as I heard it, to refocus the public outreach is...
I would say, to have, come back with a plan to refocus it.
Would you be open to us coming back with a, with a description of what it is? I think there were a lot of statements made about the assumption of what it is and how many pieces of mail went out and didn't go out, which isn't correct. And I'd like to share that. I think that, and then you can decide if it needs to be refocused. But we will bring the information so that you can have the actual data before you make your decision.
Well, is that okay?
Not before we make the decision to exclude that, but then come back with an information only item regarding outreach and, and all that?
It, it should be something different. Should be something separate. I, I was, I was wanting to conclude that in there, but to be honest with you, it's cleaner this way.
Okay, make it clean and just not amend it and go with what we have and then we can talk about an information item coming back.
So restate the motion, please.
Restate the motion is to formally take a position in opposition to the option to build a new city hall on the east side of Valley Drive.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other further discussion?
I just, I just want to say that I'm going to oppose this measure as evident by what I said earlier. But, I mean, if you listened to any public comment tonight, if you read the three public comments we got, two of them were not in favor of eliminating options at this stage of the game. I think the most important public comment that we heard is, you know, not only just the best highest use, but, you know, this is the cheapest phase to explore options. There's no conceptual drawings, there's no architectural plans. Like, I, I still am baffled why, you know, you're even not, just to discuss it with this group. As I said, this group does not think alike. There are contrasting views. So why even eliminate an option is, is absolutely silly to me.
I mean, you know, I, I, again, I appreciate your position on this. Those three speakers that spoke, I mean, two of them, I think, were on the, on the committee. But, you know, a feeling when you just talk to people out there in the community, I really think that there's a lot of people that are not going to be able to swallow this. Hotel here, build a big city hall on the other, there's just...
That's a lot of assumptions.
And eliminating it is, is the easier way to do it than...
And I've talked to parents at pickup line that, A, didn't know this project was going through, but also have real estate development and worked for large firms and like, wow, that'd be a huge, you know, huge opportunity for the city to invest in. So, again, why not have that conversation?
I know. The community's going to be divided on this all the way down until we come to it. Right, but, but, I mean, you'll still, we'll be here in another year with half the people that want to build something new and half that don't. And we're going to be still not progressing. Whereas, I feel that if we take this, at least we focused it, we narrowed a little bit.
By one building? Because there's still the police station that could be built over there, the library that could be built over, the fire station that could be built over there.
Okay, but we have...
All the Phase 3 people could be built over there.
Well, we've, we've narrowed it. Essentially, we're narrowing it. I mean, what's, what's the harm in narrowing it so we can get moving ahead with this instead of having alternatives? of having alternatives that can be so divisive for our community when we could be rallying against, you know, rallying...
Again, the outreach, the communication is an important part and actually getting down to the, the facts as opposed to a lot of, I think, you know, Mr. Berry eliminated, or talked about this, is, you know, there's a lot of discussion with elections and the sales tax and everything else, but, you know, let this group have educated conversations, view others' facilities and go from there. Thank you.
I respect that position. If there's no other discussion, Madam City Clerk, could we have a vote? The, oh, there it is. Okay, you wrote it down below. Formally take a position. Okay, the vote is up on the screen. Madam City Clerk, could you announce the vote?
Motion carries 3-2 with no's from Councilmember DeToye and Councilmember Jackson.
Okay.
Can I just make one comment, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
It's a far cry from your commitment to transparency and community input by this ridiculous neutering of our advisory group.
Well, I don't really know what that statements mean. If you wanted to include it in the deliberations, that'd be one thing, but we voted on it now, so, thank you very much. Those comments are not appreciated and not professional from this body. We're on to future agenda items, right, Madam City Clerk?
No.
Oh, oh my goodness, we've got something else going on here.
Yes, it's Consent Calendar 15, Age, Adoption of an Ordinance, Approving Zone Text Amendment 24-03, Amending Chapter 17.21 of the Hermosa Beach Municipal Code Regarding Accessory Dwelling Units and Junior Accessory Dwelling Units.
Thanks for being here and remind me of that agenda item. Good evening.
Hello.
Oh, good morning.
Mayor Protem, members of the council, are you desirous of a short presentation? Are there specific questions?
Not necessarily on my part, thank you. I have no questions.
So, Councilmember Jackson, you pulled the item. Did you have any questions or...
No questions.
Okay, no questions. Any members of the audience wishing to comment on this adoption of the ordinance and the text amendment zone? And, Madam City Clerk, do we have anyone online?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay. Back to deliberations. This was adoption of the ordinance, which we passed at the previous council meeting and it revised our municipal code to coincide with the state requirements that were required and that's where we're at this evening. So, it passed last time, I believe, 3 to 2 by the city council and we're now here, here again, ready to adopt it. No more questions, no more deliberations? Okay.
Now, if you didn't open up for deliberations, yeah, I'd like to make a statement.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
You know, I would just ask my colleagues to reconsider their previous vote and restore what is truly a win-win for everybody. Allowing an additional two feet of height on an ADU does not impact or increase density, as some might claim. Instead, it creates an opportunity to make ADU space more livable and appealing. The extra height allows for better interior design, improved functionality, and even the option to include a rooftop deck. You know, somebody mentioned, what was it Trent Larson said today that I wrote down? Decisive. You know, Hermosa Beach has been decisive in the fact that we are one of the few cities that permits rooftop decks. Promote outdoor living, enhance the overall living atmosphere, and aligns with our city's commitment to fostering vibrancy, spurring economic growth, and maintaining a high quality of life. By reducing that two feet, we then remove that option for folks who want to improve their ADUs to put a rooftop up there. So, I don't see how this isn't a win-win. There is no real negative to permitting this additional two feet. The positives far outweigh any negligible impact. And it offers significant benefits to residents and property owners. So, I would just ask that for a possibility of reconsideration, I'm probably spitting in the wind, but I wanted to make it clear that I think we are, we are losing an opportunity to do something special. We had a decisive vote before and, you know, ADUs are important. They're going to be a mainstay in our communities and our nation at large, particularly with our housing crisis. So, let's not, let's make them as appealing and livable as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. And certainly have the prerogative to bring it back and have another discussion and that's why we're here this evening. Councilmember Keegan?
I had a question regarding the rooftop decks that were mentioned, Councilman. How does 18 feet to 20 feet make it possible to have a rooftop deck? Because if you have a rooftop deck, you need at least a 42-inch rail on it, which is, you know, let's call it three and a half feet. And so, if you build a one-story unit, you can have a rooftop deck. If you build a two-story unit, you can't have one.
Well, from my discussions with individuals, they said that two feet makes a difference in terms of...
Not for decks, though.
Okay, well, maybe I'm misinformed, then.
Okay, yeah, well, I mean, it's just math. I mean...
Math isn't my foresight, I guess. Isn't my strength, so.
I don't know.
It's not just math. I talk to builders and to builders, it makes a difference, those additional two feet, so...
Well, I suppose if you're building a basement and, you know, things like that, you can get, pick a uni on it, but, I mean, to build any decks, you have to have three and a half feet above the roofline to put a railing.
Okay.
So, that means that you start with that number at 20, you're down to 16 and a half feet of building. We've made it 18.
Or you start at 17 and you can go three feet, right?
Three and a half.
Okay, so you go 16 and a half.
So, how you make, you're going to make your building with eight-foot ceilings and rafters and joists?
Well, I mean, let the, let the owner, let the developer figure that out. Again, you want to neuter them and don't give them the option. There are a lot of smart people out there, a lot of smart developers who...
I'm just referencing the decks, that's all.
Yeah, okay, well, it gives, it provides additional options if you have an additional two feet.
That's, that is true.
If the two feet don't matter, then why did we vote it down? So...
Okay. Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Councilman Jackson, I appreciate your, your comments. As a contractor, I'm very well familiar of the elevations of a building and so on and so forth and the, going from 18 to 20 feet, which is what the planning commission didn't want to do, gives them the opportunity to build a two-story building with a relatively flat roof, because you only have a couple feet, two feet left. There's not enough room for a handrail. So, you cannot put two stories and a rooftop deck in 18 or 20 feet. 18 feet, you can't do it then either way. So, the extra two feet allows you to build a two-story building, but it's going to be a relatively flat roof, a shoebox kind of a design. At 18 feet, you're more than able to build a single-story building with vaulted ceilings, if you like, and a rooftop deck, or a roof that's pitched roof, a A-frame, you could do whatever you like with it, because 18 feet is more than enough room to do that with a one-story building. So, it does increase density because by giving the extra 20, to make it 20 feet, that means that every person can build a two-story, flat, shoebox-shaped ADU in their backyard. 18 feet, you can't do that. You can build a beautiful one-story, or you can build a one-story with a handrail and a rooftop deck. So, there's lots of architectural possibilities with the 18 feet. The 20 feet only means you get more square footage out of it, more density, more squeezing everything out of everything, and I think the state has done enough of that to us without us doing it to ourselves. So, and that's the reason I support what the planning commission, I mean, I would think that that's probably why they didn't want to do the 20 feet in the first place. If you want to go higher than that, you put, just put the ADU against the back of your house, you can go up 25 feet. You can follow the elevations of the existing building as a code. So, I, you know, it's just a matter, we see this differently. I see this as additional density and adding more buildings on there and I think it's sad that the state doesn't require any parking for the ADUs in the first place and so now, let's go ahead and build two and three-bedroom ADUs with no parking. I mean, it's just, it's just more, more density in our city that I don't think we need to do. So, I appreciate your comment, but that, that's how, I'm coming from another direction and that's how I feel and, so...
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment or like to make?
I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation and ratify the ordinance.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Without any further discussion, Madam City Clerk, could we put it to a vote? Is anyone's computer working or...
Just still verbal.
There it is, we got it. There's the vote tally is up on the screen. Madam City Clerk, could you announce the vote?
Motion carries 3-2, no's from Councilmember DeToye and Councilmember Jackson.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now, we have, what's next on our agenda, our final, final agenda item?
Item 18, future agenda items.
Future agenda items. Anyone have anything to offer this evening? Okay. Oh, yep.
We did, no, we need to have a future agenda item to bring back the parking, right? Or, no, we already did that.
No, we did that. We did that.
I'm good, then.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. Tonight's meeting is adjourned at 1:23 a.m. My goodness. A reminder that city council will be dark on February 11th. Next regular council meeting will be Tuesday, February 25th at 5:00 p.m. for closed session, followed by open session at 6:00 p.m. Special meeting may be scheduled at 4:00 p.m. that day to interview applicants for the planning commission vacancy, but hopefully, we could do it at 5:30 after closed session or mold it into our regular meeting. And now, we adjourn, we adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Earl Faze and I knew him well and was saddened to hear of it, but he lived a long, 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 good life. Beloved community member, passed away on January 16. Earl was born in Detroit, Michigan, served in the U.S. Army. He was a parole officer for roughly 30 years. His life revolved around service to our community, his family and friends, and preferably without recognition. Earl married Julie in 1981, later married Alice Yang in 2003. He was a truly devoted husband to both. Joined Kiwanis in 1980, served many board positions, including president and long-term secretary and membership chair. Earl continued to be a key board member and financial supporter of Project Touch, former organizer for Trouble Youth that Julie Faze helped establish. He organized and managed a baby furniture loan program and was past president of the Hermosa Beach Sisti Sitter, Sister City Association, supporter of many other organizations. He was named Hermosa Beach Man of the Year in 2001 and has received many awards. The Faze attended St. Cross Episcopal Church in Hermosa Beach. A memorial and funeral service will be held Saturday, February 8th at 11 a.m. at the Lighthouse Memorial and Receptions Rice Center located at 5310 Torrance Boulevard. RVPs are appreciated to help with planning and memorial donations may be made to the Hermosa Beach Kiwanis Club Memorial Scholarship Fund. And for those who didn't know Earl, he certainly was someone who was a straight shooter. He would tell you exactly what he felt and who he liked and who he didn't and who, what he wanted to do and how he thought the world could be made to be a better place and it was just great to see his long service to the community and he lived a good, long life and that's all we can say is celebration of his life. Any other councilmembers have any comments or...
Yeah, I'd like to say that I met Earl at Kiwanis Club and it was a few years ago and as a new member there, I knew one or two people fairly well, but I, I ended up sitting down next to Earl at lunch one day and an instant friendship started. I was fascinated by his stories of being a parole officer, wonderful guy, a funny guy. He had a good sense of humor. We had this little drawing every week, you know, to play some little game and Earl never bought a ticket and after a week or two of sitting next to him, I go, Earl, aren't you going to buy a ticket to the thing? And he goes, oh, no. And I go, I would tear one of mine off and give it to him. I go, good luck, you know? So, we did this little thing, week after week, every Wednesday. And when he stopped coming to the meetings because of his health, it, I really miss Earl very much so. He's a wonderful, wonderful person. Earl, I know you're happy in heaven right now and God bless you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This meeting is adjourned.